Okay, we're gonna reopen the, we went to closed session and we're reopening the Tuesday, November fourteenth city council meeting. Do you want to read out on that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and public. Council did meet in closed session prior to tonight's meeting starting at five o'clock and ending just a few minutes ago and discussed two items. One was the TPR proposed lease amendment and went over the provisions of that which will be on the agenda later this evening and then adopted Resolution seventeen dash sixty-nine replacing Resolution seventeen dash fifty-eight making findings and determinations under the public employee retirement laws. No other action was taken that is reportable.
Okay, stand for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Lord, we thank you for this evening that you have given to us, Father, and we thank you for this great town of Ripon here, Lord, and the many benefits that it supplies and provides for all the city people here, Lord. We pray, Father, that this meeting tonight would go well and smoothly, Lord. We pray for our council members as well as our mayor. We ask that you would give each of them wisdom in the many decisions that they have to make, Lord. Bless this time, bless this meeting. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
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 What? I did it. He blessed the mayor. Roll call, Lisa.
Councilmember Daniel DeGrasse.
Here.
Jake Parks.
Here.
Leo Zubor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Rastusch.
President.
Mayor Dean Ucker.
Here. At this time, it's provided to the public to address the city council on items not on the agenda. If you desire to speak, please address Mr. Mayor and upon being recognized, come forward to the podium and state your name and address before proceeding into your subject matter. Anybody? Seeing nobody, we'll close the public discussion and call for the approval of the minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Where is it?
They went up and came down.
There we go.
Passes with a five oh. Moving on to approve the agenda as posted or amended. Have a motion?
Well, I have one item. I'd like to pull item one point three C.
Alexander Place.
With that, we'll have a motion to...
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Go ahead, Jay.
Passes with a five oh vote and one point three C, Leo.
We can do the consent agenda first, right? As amended too. I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Passes with a five oh. Leo?
I guess, well, my only question is when we adopted that development agreement, these conditions were put in place. Now we're changing them. Why?
Actually, as the developer started to put some house plans together, he came up with a little bit of different ideas on some of the corner lots over there for where we had setback requirements or requirement of a door facing a certain street and a garage facing another. Ends up with a little bit nicer plan, being able to switch those around. There's like essentially two lots that come out onto Doak where he wants to switch those around where the house actually lays out a lot better. And then the other ones, he's actually got some existing house plans that he's built in other areas that fit on the other lots a little bit with a little bit of adjustment on the setbacks. Some of those lots are not true what we call R one C lots where the depth and the width are exactly what was meant to be because if you look at the angle of Doak Boulevard over there in that development, some of those narrow down. So he's asking for a little bit of relief on those which we had an eight and twelve or eight and fifteen setback and so now it's going to be an eight and a twelve setback. So we're giving a little bit, there's still, it meets a different standard of ours as far as zoning and it still allows for the RV access. And then the final condition on there is there's some interior corner lots that we always, for a while now, the city's had a requirement that, or they've done requirements in development agreements where corner lots were single-family homes. And so the developer does have a two-story plan that would fit a lot nicer on some of the smaller corner lots, giving a little bit more usable backyard space and livable area, nicer layout for a house. So he's requesting that that single-story be strict on that as well.
So these changes don't compromise any of the things that were put in place when we started this?
No, I'd say it's a couple minor adjustments on the one setbacks on Doak, but it still allows for the RV access that we have on most of our lots now. And he's asking to reorient some different houses on corner lots because it actually comes up with a little bit nicer looking house plan than what he would be forced to build if it was to remain the other way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other responses?
I'll move to approve item one point three C.
Second.
And that passes with a five oh. Moving on to public hearings. This is a public hearing to consider unmet transit needs within the city of Ripon. Is that you Ken?
This is, I could take this one.
Go for it.
This is the annual process we go through to determine if there are any unmet transit needs that we have here in the city. We do receive the local transportation funds and at this time we're able to use that to help maintain our street and roads, but one of the conditions of being able to do that is as long as we continue to have unmet transit needs. I believe there is a representative from COG here. I don't know if you want to say anything or if there's any questions. Ms. Lynn is also here from COG.
Nobody wants to speak? Anybody got any questions?
We're meeting all of our transit needs, apparently.
Yeah, this is a public hearing.
The public an opportunity to report to the council on any needs that they would be requested.
Anybody from the public want to respond to this item?
They just have the public hearing.
Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody in council want to add anything? Do we need to vote on this, Kevin?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to B, Samuel King County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation and Open Space Plan 2018 Fee Update. Kevin, is that you again?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take this one. This is the time of year, once a year we, SJ COG goes through and recalculates the habitat fee for the habitat plan that's that they monitor for the county. This is a voluntary plan for developers. If they want to mitigate their impacts to fish and game and wildlife, they can pay this fee or they can actually work with those agencies directly on their own if they would like. Typically developers opt to pay the per acre fee. Several years ago, the SJ COG did go through an exercise and redid the financial analysis model that would update these fees to actually be a true cost of implementation fulfillment of the plan for buying easement land and such. So what you're seeing here tonight is the fee will be going up in 2018 and the habitat fee for Ripon, which most of our property is the multipurpose open space category, so the cheapest category. Most of the property in Ripon is zoned or that on the habitat plan. So the fee will be going from eighty-nine oh five an acre to ninety-seven oh one per acre. So this is a public hearing this evening and there is a resolution attached to the staff report that for adoption tonight and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody from the public wish to make a comment on this item? Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from the council?
The only comment I would make is these fees go directly to COG as a mitigation. These do not come to the city and these aren't being charged directly by the city.
Right. These actually, we actually collect them here when permits are pulled, but they are forwarded to COG and they administer the program and they expend the funds.
I just want to make that clear to the public that we, this isn't something we're imposing, we're charging.
Correct.
Call for a motion?
Do we need a motion to accept?
We have to adopt the resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
It passes with a five oh vote. Okay, moving on. Development agreement Meadowbrook subdivision tentative subdivision map.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take this one as well. This is a public hearing again tonight. What's in front of you this evening? Go ahead, Dan, if you put that up. This is an application here in front of you tonight to enter into a development agreement with the city of Ripon in order to subdivide about sixteen and a half acres of a nineteen point four acre parcel into ninety-three medium-density residential parcels. The zoning of the property is R three, which is limited multifamily residential, and the proposed use of the property is consistent with the city Ripon general plan and the recently adopted North Point specific plan. As always, the purpose of the agreement that's in front of you this evening is to ensure that the development of the project is in the best interest of the city and will provide for orderly growth and development of the area consistent with the city's planning goals and objectives. The central part of the agreement is Exhibit C, which contains the conditions of approval in the development agreement and specifies the developer's performance such as dedication of real property for public right-of-ways, construction of improvements throughout the subdivision, payment of mitigation fees and other things. The city has agreed to issue ninety-three permits throughout the development agreement over three phases or three cycles for the project beginning January first 2018 was when the first cycle would begin. Cycle one will include twelve permits. Cycle two will include twenty-five permits and there is some performance requirements before you can move on to the next phases as well as timing. So cycle two would not commence until January first 2019 and then cycle three wouldn't commence until January first 2020 so long as all the other performance requirements are being met. This is a little difficult to see, but this is our permit allocation schedule over the next few years. Zoom in on that. We are trying to make sure that we hold the growth rate at the two and a half percent allocation through development agreements like the council agreed upon. And so that's what you're seeing there. Two thousand eighteen, the Meadowbrook project would get twelve permits with what's already being developed out there and what's in the pipeline. We are at a two and a half percent growth rate that year. Two thousand nineteen is the same way. Meadowbrook would get twenty-five permits. That year, two thousand nineteen, we're looking like we're at two and a half percent. And then two thousand twenty, obviously, we're a little bit less than two and a half percent because some of the other projects would be developed out and will be falling off at that time. Some of the key components of the development agreement is, I'll go through now, is the project, we are requiring the project to have an HOA requirement to obviously maintain the character of the medium-density neighborhood. The items that would be included in the HOA would be maintenance of the alleys within the project. As you can see here, the alleys are kind of the yellow or gold-colored roadways here on this exhibit. Maintenance of all red curbing and no parking signs throughout the project. This project, as we'll go through a little bit later, you'll see is being developed with the medium-density roadway standard. So a lot of the roadways in there have parking only on one side of the street, so they will have to have some red curbing throughout the project. And that does require maintenance from year to year. So that would be part of the HOA requirement as well. Also, the HOA requirement would be maintenance of landscaping throughout the project, including front yard landscaping of all the residences. Again, this is something that we feel is important to maintain the character of the project throughout time. And so the green areas here depicted on this exhibit would be all the common landscape areas that would be maintained by the HOA and then as maintained by a landscape maintenance district would be the medians. So you see some medians that are going to be actually installed on Goodwin. Goodwin Drive is part of this project. There is some existing medians on Colony that would be landscaped and there would be some medians along Fulton Avenue that would be installed that would have some landscaping that would be maintained by the landscape maintenance district as well. Also included in the HOA is a requirement that they have language in there to help self-regulate and provide parameters regarding onsite parking within the project. A lot of times these medium-density projects and higher-density projects have issues with parking. We don't want to create issues where our police department has to go out and babysit a lot of these things. So they should be able to self-regulate themselves a little bit with the onsite parking and that should be some language that would be included in the HOA. This project does have to meet the city Ripon's affordable housing requirement. I believe the applicant in this case is wishing to provide affordable housing using the FHA requirement that we have. So ten percent of the homes on this site or nine point three houses on this, in this project would be developed as an affordable FHA home, FHA limit home. Again, the project is meeting our medium-density standards that we adopted with the North Point plan as you can see here. The lot sizes, all lots proposed within the project will meet the R three zoning requirements and standards as we adopted in the North Point plan. The project does contain a mix of standard traditional front-loaded garage lots. So roughly a third of the homes in the project will have garages off the front, facing the front of the house. And then roughly two-thirds of the houses will be rear alley-loaded lots. So the garage would be off the back of the house, off the alley. So the North Point specific plan includes very specific requirements for housing types, numbers and models and setbacks, all of which this project will be required to meet. The average lot size within this project ranges from approximately thirty-two hundred square feet. And then there's some odd kind of shaped lots throughout the development that actually get up to around sixty-seven hundred square feet. So those are kind of on a curve or a knuckle throughout the project. Floor plans and elevations of the, the North Point plan calls for projects with more than thirty-five lots to provide a minimum of four different floor plans with four different elevations for each plan. So the development agreement does call for four-sided architecture to be incorporated into the final design of the homes. And the development agreement does contain this attachment here that's in front of you depicting a preliminary architectural theme for the project. What this is really trying to do is define the quality and character of the houses that could be developed in here. It's by no means what's being proposed at this point, but just to kind of set a standard for a builder when they do come in for this project of what the expectations for quality within the city of Ripon are. Landscaping requirements for the project, there is a master landscaping plans for the project, for the entire project are required to be submitted for approval to the city. The plans are to include in-tracks, so landscaping within the project and out-of-track landscaping, which is the landscaping along the perimeters of the roadways and in the medians. And all the landscape areas of the project, with the exception of the medians like I mentioned earlier, would be maintained by an HOA. And then the landscape maintenance districts will maintain any landscaping within the medians within the streets. The owner, developer of the project shall be required to provide front and street-side yard landscaping for the parcels for all the residential lots. The landscaping will comply with the city Ripon's most current landscaping standards and guidelines and plans. For each parcel will be required to be submitted for further review and approval. Again, the landscaping for each of the units, the front yard landscaping for each of the units and the side yard landscaping, so stuff that can be seen from the public right-of-way would be maintained by the HOA. The owner has, the developer has indicated they intend to design the project with a central park off, so off of Goodwin Drive is the main entrance to the project. There is a central park located within kind of the main center of the development itself. The park is about approximately a half acre in size and is intended to serve the residents of the project. So a detailed park and design amenity plan will be required to be submitted as they get further along in the development. So there will be some amenities provided in that park such as equipment, play equipment or such that they would submit for final approval. And then, as you can see, there is a placebo that runs through the project that's kind of like a linear park. If you go out there, if you kind of go by that site, you can see there's an overhead, MID overhead utility lines that are high voltage lines. They can't, those cannot be undergrounded just because of the voltage on those. So that's an area where they would be developing a park space underneath it. So it runs the entire length of the project and does tie in kind of with the main central park in the project. The owner also, developer agrees to design and construct an entry feature. So Street A, as you're seeing there, the entry to the project will have an entry feature such as like a landscape median. The North Point plan does have that as a requirement of residential projects that they have some sort of entry feature so you know you're entering into a residential neighborhood. As far as fencing, the developer agrees that all onsite fencing shall be vinyl fencing as approved by the city of Ripon and final fencing plans for each parcel shall be submitted to the city for final review and approval. The vinyl fencing requirement is really just to kind of provide that ongoing quality of a medium-density neighborhood. The setbacks for these houses are a lot closer to the street and wood fencing does tend to deteriorate and over time starts looking not as nice. So the vinyl fencing would kind of withstand the test of time on that. Parking, project parking requirements. All residential lots within the subdivision will have a two-car driveway with a minimum depth of twenty feet. So you can fit two cars in the driveway and it will have a two-car garage, which is a standard dimension of twenty by twenty, twenty feet wide by twenty-two feet deep. Tandem garages where you have cars parking in front of each other are not allowed in the North Point plan or within our municipal code for meeting the parking requirements. The alleyways, as you can see here on this attachment here, is kind of this section of the alleyway. It will be a twenty-foot wide paved path with five foot of landscaping on each side or driveway or buffer zone there. So there will be, where there's not a driveway crossing, the alleyway there, there will be a five-foot landscape buffer between the alley and the rear fence of the property there. This does meet, this alley, this twenty-foot wide alley with the five-foot buffers on each side does meet the city Ripon standard. The project does also utilizing, like I said, we call it the North Point specific plan has some, I think, a little bit narrower street sections in our standard single-family neighborhoods. So they are utilizing a fifty-four-foot right-of-way street section, which is directly out of the North Point plan. It does provide for parking on one side only. And the parkways are five feet wide instead of like what you would see on our traditional street, they are ten feet wide. All else is the same. They do have six-foot sidewalk on both sides and the travel lanes are our twelve-foot travel lanes like we typically have on our standard streets. There are some common parking areas located throughout the plan just to help alleviate some additional alleviation of parking concerns for these medium-density areas. So they are providing an additional twenty-five parking spaces that are strategically located throughout the plan. As you can see off the alleys here, kind of by the central park and the central placebo, as you can see some of these additional parking spaces, that's for guest parking as well. Additionally, the owner, developer, will be providing additional street parking along Goodwin. Goodwin Drive, this is, this is an example of kind of the intended design possibly for Goodwin Drive. They would be carving out parking and putting in sidewalk a little further back. So they would be carving out parking off the street, the pathway, but being able to park in front of the homes on Goodwin Drive there. So again, providing additional guest parking for the project. Interior street design, again, is a fifty-four-foot right-of-way and they will be, they will be using city standard with pavers for the city streets. Fulton Avenue would require some dedication. So although this might be a little difficult to read, they will be adding in, so Fulton Avenue right now, next to the project is only half width. They would be adding in a center median and then two lanes of traffic that would travel, a southbound lane there. So it would be fully developing Fulton Avenue to its full extent and they would be putting in all the associated improvements for that improvement there, for that requirement. They would also be putting in roughly about twenty, what's that, twenty-seven feet of landscaping between Fulton Avenue and then there's a frontage road on the inside of the project that would actually set the houses back further off of Fulton Avenue. So Goodwin Drive, they do have some improvements to do along Goodwin Drive as well. Goodwin Drive does not really widen any. However, they are going to remove the sidewalk and curb and gutter along the property frontage over there, push it back so they can provide on-street parking for their project. They also will be putting in a landscape median out there to kind of separate the residential project from what's across the street is commercial with the Save Mart Center there and future commercial as some of the other properties develop. Colony Road, actually Colony Road is fully developed as well. They would be, just be providing some landscaping out there in the median. And then there is a bus turnout that they would be designing along that frontage as well because we do have a bus stop there currently. Secondary access to the project, this project is meant to connect with the project that's directly to the south of it, but until that project is built, there is a need for secondary access in and out of the site for emergency purposes. So there would be a temporary secondary emergency access that would be put in the project that would exit out onto Fulton Avenue and would be more of like a gated entrance. The project does also utilizing, like I said, we call it the North Point specific plan, has some, I think, a little bit narrower street sections in our standard single-family neighborhoods. So they are utilizing a fifty-four-foot right-of-way street section, which is directly out of the North Point Plan. It does provide for parking on one side only. And the parkways are five feet wide instead of like what you would see on our traditional street, they are ten feet wide. All else is the same, they do have six-foot sidewalk on both sides, and the travel lanes are our twelve-foot travel lanes like we typically have on our standard streets. There are some common parking areas located throughout the plan, just to help alleviate some additional alleviation of parking concerns for these medium-density areas. So they are providing an additional twenty-five parking spaces that are strategically located throughout the plan, as you can see off the alleys here, kind of by the central park and the central placebo. As you can see, some of these additional parking spaces, that's for guest parking as well. Additionally, the owner, developer, will be providing additional street parking along Goodwin, Goodwin Drive. This is a, this is an example of kind of the intended design possibly for Goodwin Drive. They would be carving out parking and putting in sidewalk a little further back. So they would be carving out parking off the street, the pathway, but being able to park in front of the homes on Goodwin Drive there. So again, providing additional guest parking for the project. Interior street design, again, is a fifty-four-foot right-of-way, and they will be, they will be using city standard with pavers for the city streets. Fulton Avenue would require some dedication, so although this might be a little difficult to read, they will be adding in, so Fulton Avenue right now, next to the project, is only half width. They would be adding in a center median, and then two lanes of traffic that would travel, a southbound lane there. So it would be fully developing Fulton Avenue to its full extent, and they would be putting in all the associated improvements for that improvement there, for that requirement. They would also be putting in roughly about twenty, what's that, twenty-seven feet of landscaping between Fulton Avenue, and then there's a frontage road on the inside of the project that would actually set the houses back further off of Fulton Avenue. So Goodwin Drive, they do have some improvements to do along Goodwin Drive as well. Goodwin Drive does not really widen any, however, they are going to remove the sidewalk and curb and gutter along the property frontage over there, push it back so they can provide on-street parking for their project. They also will be putting in a landscape median out there to kind of separate the residential project from what's across the street is commercial with the Save Mart Center there and future commercial as some of the other properties develop. Colony Road, actually Colony Road is fully developed as well. They would be, just be providing some landscaping out there in the median. And then there is a bus turnout that they would be designing along that frontage as well, because we do have a bus stop there currently. Secondary access to the project, this project is meant to connect with the project that's directly to the south of it, but until that project is built, there is a need for secondary access in and out of the site for emergency purposes. So there would be a temporary secondary emergency access that would be put in the project that would exit out onto Fulton Avenue, would be more of like a gated entrance. So it's only there for emergency purposes, so fire department or police department would be able to utilize that to get people in and out if they had to. That emergency access would actually go away when the connection point is made with the project to the south. And we are collecting money for those improvements to be put back. So when they remove the temporary secondary access, we can actually finish off the sidewalk there and then landscaping and such as it was fully intended to be. One of the comments we received with the North Point Plan and with the, with these projects is, is the school district had concerns of getting kids safely to Parkview Elementary School and across Fulton Avenue, which is a four-lane road. So we did actually reach out to a traffic consultant, and this project and the project that you're going to hear next did fund, fund the contract with the traffic consultant to come up with a safer out-to-school plan for residential projects on the west side of Fulton Avenue. What came out of that, what came out of that project was, what you're seeing here, is the roundabouts, this is the roundabout, a picture of the roundabout at Fulton and Colony. So the idea would be to actually put curbing, where the red is on here, would be actually put curbing and some sort of either pavers or cobble in those areas, creating kind of a safe zone for kids. They would only be crossing than one lane of traffic. If you drive, if you go out there now to those roundabouts, they are striped that way to where they choke you down to one lane before entering the roundabout. This would be putting in more of a hard curb, so that there is some protection there. And then on each side, as you're entering in, you see these numbers here, these are actually, these numbers here are actually flashing beacons that you're seeing down here. So somebody entering the crosswalk would hit that flashing beacon, there is an LED light that would start flashing to let traffic know coming in or out of the roundabout that somebody's crossing at those crosswalks there. So the project would be required to put in the necessary improvements to get the kids safely down to Parkview School, so they probably, more realistically, wouldn't be putting in all four legs of this, but they would have to choose a path to maybe get the kids across Fulton, and across Colony, and then across, obviously, the next picture here, Santos Avenue. There's Santos Avenue Roundabout. And there are some improvements that were identified down at Parkview Elementary School. They wanted to, what they call tighten up the curve, the curves there. So right now, those radiuses around those corners are pretty wide, so traffic around those corners, it is pretty good speed. So if you actually tighten up those radiuses on the corners, it slows traffic down. And then moving the crosswalk away from the corner and actually moving it down the street a little bit towards Parkview School. So traffic would have to slow down coming around the corners, and then kids could cross safely at that point. So that was the proposal given to us by, it was Fair and Peers, the traffic consultant, and those are the improvements that would be required to get kids safely from this project down to Parkview Elementary School. So that's a requirement, obviously, of the Development Agreement. Again, access for the site, the main entrance for this project site is off of Goodwin Drive, kind of just adjacent to Save Mart Shopping Center over there. That's the main access to the site, and then they will be having a connection with the project to the south of it when it does go in, as I explained earlier. Again, they're using the fifty-four-foot street right-of-way, which was approved during the North Point Plan. As with projects in the past, that we've been starting to look at water usage for projects as they come in, so we did analyze the anticipated water consumption of this project, using actual medium-density projects or family water usages within the city of Ripon. So a project of this size would use about sixty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-two gallons of water per day, in comparison with an amen orchard of the same size, which would use about forty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety gallons of water per day. This number was based on an amen orchard using about three feet of irrigation water each year. This is the information we got from the SSJID Irrigation District. So the difference is about one and a half times higher for residential as compared to what a farm, farmland would use that's there. Another perspective is that this project would amount to about 1.5% of the city's entire yearly water usage. So in comparing the two, the orchard versus housing, we do have a difference of about a half a percent in water usage, being a residential neighborhood than an orchard. Again, these are, these are based on numbers that we currently have in town for medium-density projects, but all projects now are required to meet the latest green building code for structures and the most current state-of-California water-efficient landscape ordinances. So those numbers could be a little bit lower than what's actually shown in the staff report here. This is, this is information that we have readily available on hand that we know is accurate for medium-density. We don't know what the savings could be with the green building code until we actually get some actual usage coming in. The tentative map is, again, for ninety-three lots, the yellow, all the yellow lots on the plan here are the front-loaded, the front-loaded designed lots, and then the light brown are the alley-loaded lots. The dark brown is an indication of where the developer is intending to possibly build the affordable units, FHA affordable units for the project along Colony Avenue. So letters were sent out to all the property owners within three hundred feet of this project, as required by law, and notifying them of the public hearing. The public hearing notice was also published in the paper and posted at City Hall. Additionally, the public hearing notice and the project review package was posted on city's website under public notices. So project was appropriately noticed. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this project on October sixteenth, and to provide the public with an opportunity to comment. And at that meeting, no one from the public came forth at that time to comment on the project that's here in front of you. Subsequently, the Planning Commission took action to recommend that the city council approve the project as presented, with no recommended amendments, with a five-zero vote. The Planning Commission minutes were attached to the staff report, if you guys hopefully had a chance to review those. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you. This is a public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, at this point, is there anybody from the project that wishes to speak? Mark?
Mark Wilbur, two-nine-oh-nine Coffee Road, Modesto. Basically, I really don't have anything to add. I would be glad to answer any questions you have. Mr. Jim Krasilius is not here tonight, he's in San Diego at another meeting, but I basically, along with Dave Stark and Tony DiMello of North Star Engineering, have kind of been the liaison for him for the past year and a half on reaching entitlements. Yeah, I basically, again, don't particularly have anything to add to what Ken said, but if you do have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Does anybody on council have a question?
So Mark, did Dave design this?
Actually, it was kind of a combination of Ken, myself, Dave and Tony. It was, are you referring to the lots?
Yeah, I mean, I just made a comment today, no? I mean, when I looked at it originally, and I'm looking at it closer now tonight, I mean, I liked the layout. At first, I think you did a good job of what you had.
Yeah, I, it's different. I mean, for, if this was Pleasanton or Hayward or something, this is pretty standard fare. But for Ripon, this is a different type layout, and obviously, a different type product. The idea really is kind of going with what could be called a patio home, in that there really isn't going to be any backyard to speak of, but it'll have a fairly large, if you can kind of visualize, sort of a U-shaped product with the outdoor space really being patio, with the kind of the current thing in vogue, to have the outdoor fireplace and that sort of thing. So that, it's going to be an expensive project, like, and obviously, looking at it, it's, but at the end of the day, it should be a really nice project. It's just one of those things, as I was talking to Planning Commission, it's often hard to really know who your buyer's going to be. Sometimes I guess completely wrong. My first, my thought throughout this is probably going to be the over fifty empty nester types, but sometimes you can be fooled, you'll get single women, couples. I don't see it as a particularly, quote, "traditional family-type" product, but it has been kind of, and I'd like to thank both Dave, Tony and Ken, we've had many spirited discussions on this. But I think we've actually ended up with a pretty good product, especially, as you pointed out, given the constrictions of the land area.
I have one question. I think you said in your presentation that the dark units at the top were where the affordable units were going to go. I thought we tried to spread those out around in a development.
It is in the ordinance to try to do that. It can be, obviously, as approved by the council in the Development Agreement. So if you like them spread out, that's something you should discuss this evening, if you're fine with where they're at. This is kind of, I think, the proposal from the developer. I think these are considered, probably considered a little bit more of the less desirable lots along Colony, because there won't be parking really out front. But that's something that, like I said, you can discuss with the developer on trying to get those shifted around if you'd like.
If I could respond to that a little bit, when, you're correct, and when that was originally implemented, we were traditionally doing the duplex-type lots. And with this, actually, given the specifics on the North Point Plan, we can have single-family units. And when this, and I actually, when we were designing this, didn't realize that until we were also doing the BMR units for the project, the vineyards. So frankly, I see your point, but at the end of the day, those may effectively be the same units we're building here, because we're not doing the old BMR regs. This is going to be kind of a quasi-market rate deal. And so if there's some way that we can sort of leave that to planning director discretion or amend it later if we need to, because it may end up being kind of a moot point, we may end up literally doing the same units as BMR that you're seeing here, or you won't really be able to really notice the difference, frankly. And largely due to the fact we're not, we're not restricted to just doing those duplex units. So I'd prefer, if we could, just get, I'm not saying we want to skirt the system, but if we could get some leeway that Ken can look at the architectural, we can bring it back in front of council.
My intent is not to say that I disagree with it, but the intent under the, I don't know, old rule was that you didn't want to know which ones were the BMR units and which ones weren't. If that happens here, I'm happy. My concern is, though, if it doesn't, and the only time we find out it didn't is after it's done, we got, we have a problem. So if we're going to move forward, fine, but my desire is that you guys pay attention to what's going on out there so that we don't have a problem too late to do something about.
Can I say something to that?
I'm not sure, Councilman, I'm not quite sure what your concern is, I guess. Are you concerned about them having higher visibility, or let, I don't?
No, I'm not concerned about, I'm concerned about visibility. If I drive in there and I can't tell which ones are BMR and which aren't, I'm happy. I don't care where they are. That's, that's my point, and if that happens, I'm happy. I just don't want to, when we're finaling the last four houses and all of a sudden we've decided we have a problem.
Well...
As long as you and him work together, I'm good with that.
The bigger issue, I don't think even is architectural. If you go back on where we've had problems here, it was more in maintenance, yard maintenance. And again, going back to our discussions even a year ago, the problem with the BMR doing it for sale housing, oftentimes, we're putting people in something they really couldn't afford or couldn't keep up. I think this is what you've done, is a far better solution than what we had. Also, keep in mind, we're going to have an HOA doing the yard maintenance anyway, so... And lastly, I'm, and I'm fine with, you know, you guys having, Ken or someone will have architectural review here anyway, but I, it's in our best interest, it's not a problem. I mean, if we, clearly, that's probably the most visible point of the project in many ways. So it may, I just, I think it's, will be a non-issue.
Okay.
I think, looking at the bean alley-loaded garage lots, you're going to avoid most of the, if it was a duplex-type unit where you normally see the garages in a traditional duplex, you're not going to see that on this anyways, because they are behind, all you're going to see is the frontage, you're going to see a front of a house without that, so I don't think you really ever tell if they were, I mean, they may be a smaller unit or slightly different, but beyond that, I think you're going to see probably just as nice a product everywhere with the way it's set up.
I'm good.
Okay. I have one, I had, I actually had the same question as Leo did, but I'm a little concerned on the only one entrance. And, you know, I mean, I see that it looks like there's an exit out the other way, but is there anything out that other way? I mean, I realize we have another project that's going to go there, but I do have a little bit of concern, a safety issue, that you got one entrance into this whole place.
They're going to put a second one.
It depends on when the project's built, and they don't have it, they don't have...
And maybe, maybe it can't even be done, but it's just a thought, concern.
Right, so that's a concern of the police department and fire department. That's why there is a temporary secondary access. They don't necessarily need it or want it to be open for people to travel in and out on a daily basis, but if there's an accident or some incident that prohibits people getting out of the main entrance, they can open up that gate and get people out safely. So that's the intent of that secondary access, and until, obviously, the project to the south of that would develop, then they would have a city street connecting to each other and a second way out. You'll see on the next project, they have the similar condition where they have a secondary access gate as well for the project that is only meant for emergency purposes.
It'll be like in one of those green path areas, is that...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, you got a problem with cars going, those are two very busy roads. You don't want ingress and egress on two busy roads at this point.
No, I mean, where it's located, I realize that it's difficult, but...
With the temporary access, I guess, it's pretty standard for a small subdivision that has only one entrance. It's very common.
Any more questions from, out of Mark, from Mark?
I'm sorry.
I'm just seeing if anybody else had any questions for you, so you can, I guess...
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the public have any comments on this project? Right, oh, yeah. State your name and address, please.
My name is Mike Turn, I'm a six-two-three Shasta in Ripon, so I live pretty close to this subdivision. I just have a couple of questions. One is about, between the two projects and I guess some of the other projects, at least in these two, probably three, four hundred more people in an area where there's zero people living right now than some horses and maybe some ranch people. I'm kind of concerned about the traffic, that, you know, what will be the impact of the traffic, both Fulton, Colony and Goodwin Ways there? Given that you're adding a lot more people in here, I don't really see a lot of, I haven't heard anything about it as far as how that's going to impact current residents that live there right now. My second issue is, I guess, about water and thinking about droughts and where we had to cut back. The last drought, we had a certain, I think there was a certain baseline where we had to cut back to two thousand and five or whatever the date was. And I'm kind of curious how that works, not, you know, I've been here about three years, I don't know the whole thing, how it works, but given that we're adding, you know, three hundred or so lots, not only here, but, you know, the other places up by Ripon, across from Missland Park and so on, how does the drought affect, like, we will have another drought at some point, how does the, how does that going to affect us as far as the baseline? Will there be, will it be taken into consideration that we've added houses to it so that we're not like squeezing us because we, you know, we're trying to save for ten thousand, we're now we're at fifteen thousand people? Do you understand what I'm kind of going at? How does, so I'm kind of curious how that works, and those are my two concerns. Thank you.
You want to respond to that, Ken? The water, actually, wouldn't the amen... The water, actually, wouldn't the Ammon Orchard take more water than the residents?
No, actually, the residents, they would take a little bit more than the Ammon Orchard that was there. I might let Ted or Kevin or James on the water issues talk on that one, but I'll quickly address the traffic. Fulton Avenue is actually meant to be, it will be widened with this project along Fulton Avenue to its full width, so it'll be two lanes in each direction with a median. That road was built to handle a lot more traffic than what it's seeing at this point in time, and it is, it does have an ability to easily handle the 93 homes and the 88 homes that are being proposed for this area. I don't have exact traffic counts, but there is a, there is a traffic count that these roads can't handle and levels of service that would show you that a level of service A can handle X amount of traffic per day, and we're not even going to even come close to that, so. As far as water, I don't know. Ted?
I'll attempt to answer that. With the state requirements for the reductions, it's typically calculated and reported in gallons per day per resident. So it's the calculations based on the population. Each, they've modified it a bit to where you can take into consideration additional growth when it came to the percentage that was the state had mandated on the city of Ripon and others for this year. In the future, you know, it's hard to say how they'll approach it, but typically, that's taken into consideration.
I have another question. Can I have another question? Because we do have still some farming around, and maybe it's a county ordinance that I don't know about, but is there disclosures? Because a lot of times we do this building and it's, you know, it's not around all the farming environment or right next to it, that, you know, do they need to disclose? You're going to get dust, you're going to get all kinds of stuff coming in your windows and doors, and is that something that's a county ordinance that you buy your own risk of all this, or do they need to put it in their sales agreements? I don't know. I just don't want, I don't want people that are still farming around there to be impacted, you know, with, hey, you know, what are you doing, and I just bought a house here.
Right, you know, I'll let maybe Mark speak on behalf of what has to be disclosed to a buyer, I'm not too sure on that, but we do, the city of Ripon does have a right to farm ordinance.
Okay, good.
So obviously, the farming that's there now can continue to farm and do their operations as they did in the past. Does that mean we're not going to get any complaints? No, that doesn't.
No, I get that. But we're doing the best we can to help out, is what you're saying. Then I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that's in place.
Any other questions? So we, at this time, will, anybody have a motion?
Yeah, close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we'll close the, anybody else from the public want to speak? Okay, we'll close the public, so, anybody else from the council or...
I'll move to approve the Meadow Brook development agreement and to approve the tentative subdivision map based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Hit your button.
Now, what do I do?
You got to walk back in. It's PW4. Want me to move it for you?
Yes.
Go ahead, do it.
He's got to vote either way.
You move it, I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Exclamation point.
Why don't you just take a vote?
Can't we do a verbal thing? Stupid.
Sorry, Leo, we already moved.
What's your vote, Leo?
Let me get the vote.
Yes.
Okay, that passes with a five-o vote. Moving on. Development agreement for Meadowwood subdivision, tentative subdivision map.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'll try to do here is a lot of this project is similar in nature to the one we just went through, so I'll try to step through some of those quickly and just point out some of the big, the differences in the two projects. They are, they are very similar since that they do have about the same densities, they are looking at about similar lot sizes, they just have a little bit different layout, obviously, in the project than what you saw in front of you with the other one. So if you would, Dan, could you please?
Yep.
So the application here is to obviously enter into a development agreement with the city, just like the other project. This is in order to subdivide about 12.98 acres into 88 medium-density residential parcels. Again, this is Zoned R3, which is exactly the same zoning as the last project. Again, we've allocated permits out to this project in three phases, much like the other project. These actually are getting more permits up front than the Meadow Brook project, but they will be getting permits, they will be getting, in cycle one, they'll be looking at getting 30 permits, which begins January 1st, 2018. Cycle two, which can, will not commence until January 1st, 2019, you're looking at another 30 permits, and then the final 28 permits would be January 1st, 2020. Again, there's, there's performance stipulations on when they can get those permits too, so if they haven't built and finalized some of the units or met those obligations, they can't move on to the next phase as well. This project, like the other project, we're proposing that it has an HOA to maintain the project itself, the landscaping and such within the project. Just like the other project, we're looking at the red curbing being maintained by the HOA, all front yard, side yard landscaping being maintained by the HOA. This project is proposing to have some what they call privacy walls, and then there is some actual masonry walls or fencing that would separate the project where it does abut up against non-residential property. So what you're seeing on this diagram here, the blue lines on here is what they're calling a privacy fence, so it's a six-foot tall kind of masonry wall that's kind of a combination masonry wall with wrought iron type fencing designed on it, and they are proposing to put that along Fulton Avenue and kind of the entrance of the project. And then there, an eight-foot masonry wall, which is kind of showing you here, I think this is actually a very poor picture when I zoom in on it. This is an eight-foot masonry wall that's going to separate the project from non-residential, so it'd be the southern boundary, the western boundary where it abuts up against the Goodwin Business Park, along Dexter Way, again, abutting up against Goodwin Business Park, and then along Goodwin Drive because across the street from Goodwin Drive from them, they're not front-loading the houses, so they face Goodwin Drive there and back-load the houses there, so there would be an eight-foot masonry wall along that street as well. All those would be part of the HOA and would be required to be maintained by the HOAs as well. They do also have some, within this development, they have some common driveways, so you can see in these areas here, they've chosen to kind of lay out some of the lots where they're on off of a common driveway. Those common driveways will be owned and maintained by the HOA as well, as well as this center kind of courtyard area as well, that big red hatched area there. Those are all areas that would be owned and maintained by the HOA as well for the project. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, the red curbing for the project itself. And then, this is all the landscaping that would be maintained throughout the project, the common landscaping areas besides the front yards of the homes and the side yards. So that would all be included in the HOA to make sure that the project stays consistent and looking like a quality project over time. Again, the lot standards are the same as the Meadow Brook project that we just went through. They are following the same standards, they do have the same setback requirements. Two-car garages will be a part of each of the homes, so it is a standard two-car garage, not a tandem. They do have 20-foot long driveways in front of the garage, so they can park two cars in the driveway itself, too. So that does help with parking requirements throughout the project. Floor plans, they have actually, this is an attachment actually out of the Meadowwood marketing brochure that they've put together of some craftsman-style homes. This is, again, they don't have exact floor plans or designs yet, but this is kind of a design theme of the project and something that we would use to judge a developer coming in and trying to submit housing plans and such to the city of Ripon for what they would build on site. So this, again, kind of defines the quality and the expectation of the quality to be constructed for the project. Landscape requirements, again, we're looking at a master landscape plan, obviously, for onsite and offsite for the project. And landscaping and architecture in these smaller projects really kind of define the quality of these things, so it's very important to make sure we get a good landscape plan. They will be designing an entry feature for their project. This, again, is out of their marketing material. This is a kind of a concept of how they would design an entry feature. That is actually off of Fulton Avenue. If I get back to the main picture here. So off of Fulton Avenue, it does line up with Shasta Avenue would be the main entrance of the project. So that entry feature would be off right there at the intersection of Fulton and Shasta. They do also have some residential paseos throughout the project that do run underneath the MID power lines, much like the Meadow Brook project. It'll just be a continuation of that paseo. They will design that paseo with amenities in it and stuff that would have to be submitted to the city of Ripon for final approval on that. We did kind of go through the fencing already on that plan. Again, the masonry wall and the privacy fencing, that would all be part of the HOA for maintenance. There is a requirement, much like the Meadow Brook project, about doing vinyl fencing throughout the project as well to keep the quality up of that. All common driveways within the project, so the common driveway areas that we showed you, there's actually three of the, or four of those throughout the project. They are designed, being designed to 32-foot wide sections, so the pavement section for those common driveways is 32 feet wide. That is directly out of the North Point plan. It's something that when we traveled around and did some research on that before adopting the North Point plan, felt was very important as far as alleviating parking concerns and such and stuff and within a development of this nature. So that's what you're seeing throughout the plan, is the 32-foot wide paved common driveway So those are shown in red here, and then the common driveway area, which is that middle kind of courtyard area, they are designing to a little different standard. It is a 20-foot travel lane with parking on one side, and they do have some parking in the middle of that area as well. That area is a one-way, so you would travel through that common courtyard area in a one-way, with a one-way street pattern. So it would come in, be able to circle around, come back out. As you can see, there's additional parking within the middle of that to provide additional parking for all those courtyard homes. And again, they all do have the 20-foot long driveway to help with parking as well onsite. They are anticipating to utilize another North Point standard. It's a little bit different than the Meadow Brook project, but they, this development has chosen to use the 48-foot right-of-way. The only difference there is there's sidewalk only on one side of the street instead of both. Same, same street section as the Meadow Brook project, parking, again, on one side, five-foot, five-foot wide parking, or planting strips on each side of the road, and then six-foot sidewalk on the, on one side only. Again, they would be having a red curb, a good portion of the project that is not parking on the other side, and that is something that would be in the HOA for maintenance as well. Just another picture of the parking standard. This actually is Fulton Avenue improvements. Again, they will be putting in the two lanes, two southern lanes of Fulton Avenue, much like the Meadow Brook project, so they'll be looking at putting the median on Fulton Avenue and then two additional lanes. They have a 10-foot parking or planting strip along, between Fulton and the sidewalk, there's a six-foot sidewalk. And then the North Point specific plan did call for like a 34-foot landscape buffer between the sidewalk and where the property line for houses could be. That's really kind of pushed houses back off of Fulton Avenue. As you know, Fulton Avenue is a little bit higher-speed road meant to move traffic, so pushing the houses back was an important aspect of the North Point plan, and that's what they are actually meeting the requirement there. This actually is the street section for Goodwin Drive, so if you go on the backside of the project, there is a median that's being proposed to be put in the middle of Goodwin Drive, a landscape median, which is a requirement of the project. It does have attached sidewalk over there already, and they are going to be putting up an eight-foot masonry wall. So there's a 10-foot landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the masonry wall, and that is actually a decent-sized landscape buffer to be able to buffer that wall. That's something that, if you go out by Barton Ranch here in Ripon on Miljo, there's about a 10-foot landscape buffer between sidewalk and the wall there. It does provide enough area to landscape it so you can kind of buffer that wall and it's not just exposed for being a target for graffiti and stuff like that. So the 10-foot is an adequate landscape buffer there. Dexter Way improvements, actually, let's see if I can get to that one there. Again, emergency access, I'll touch on that really quick while we have this on the screen. They are, as you can see, the future connection to the Meadow Brook project is in this area here until that project is completed, whichever one goes first. They would be required to have a secondary access. We are proposing to do a secondary emergency access out of their project onto Dexter Way, which is a city street. There would be a gate there, much like that, that would be part, there would be a break in the masonry wall there with a gate, and that would just be for emergency access only, only accessible with the police or fire department to get people in and out of there. Once that, once that connection's made with the other subdivision, there is going to be money collected, obviously, to convert that back, be able to fill that masonry wall in and pull this gate out at that point. Let me see if I can get to the Dexter Way improvements. I don't know if I have a slide on that one. Dexter Way, obviously, they're going to be doing some masonry walls along Dexter Way. Get to that slide if I can. So this is the wall plan. You can see along Dexter Way, there's an eight-foot masonry wall requirement there. They will be putting that in as well. There'll be a 15-foot landscape buffer between the existing curb, the existing northern curb on Dexter Way. There'll be a 15-foot landscape buffer there that's owned and maintained by the HOA, asks, again, to buffer that wall, and it is also to kind of buffer the houses from non-residential uses there having the eight-foot masonry wall. So that is a requirement of the plan itself and of the development agreement, too. Again, we'll get to the safe route to school, I won't go through those too much, but they are required to also do a safe route to school plan and put in improvements to get kids safely to Parkview. Depending on who goes first on this project, you know, if they, if these people, if this development ends up going first, they will have to provide some sort of path from their project to get kids down to the roundabout at Colony and Fulton to be able to cross the safe route to school crossing. So whether it's a form of a temporary AC path or something that's ADA accessible, there's a requirement for them to do that as well in the DA. And so I won't go through those improvements, we went through those with the last project. Irrigation facilities, you know, the city did receive some comments, obviously, from SSGID regarding the irrigation facility there, there's an above-ground canal that starts at the edge of their project, and there is also some laterals that kind of feed through their project that feeds some of that land. So some of the requirements would be to remove some of the laterals to the properties that are going to no longer be needed. These are typical conditions. And then also, comment from SSGID is to underground the canal, the open canal that is at the edge of the property to the frontage road. This is a requirement of the North Point plan, has been, since we adopted the North Point plan, has always been anticipated to be done. So, you know, both SSGID and the city view this improvement as necessary from a public safety and a liability standpoint. This project anticipates extending sidewalk along Fulton Avenue as required by the Ripon municipal code and city standards to the very point of where this canal comes above Project containing 88 residential homes will anticipate adding roughly 250 residents directly adjacent to this, what's considered an attractive nuisance. An additional concern of the district, besides the liability of someone falling into the canal, is the, is a concern, is the elevation of the above-ground canal to the project site. The canal elevation sits much higher than the finished elevation of the adjacent residential lots, and so failure of the canal could cause flood damage to some of the homes that would be built, obviously, within the project and the proximity of their facility. Therefore, staff is standing behind SSGID's request for undergrounding the canal and for both the safety and liability aspect for both the district and the city of Ripon. So that kind of finishes up my presentation this evening here for you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any other than that. This is a public hearing, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, any...
Okay, with that, any somebody from the project management want to speak?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is George Petrolakis. Eleven thirty, Twelfth Street in Modesto, I'm the project representative tonight, I'm happy to be here. I represent the project applicant. With me is Sean Tobin from Mid Valley Engineering, who knows more about the project details than I do. And he's happy to answer any questions you have as we go along. We want to thank all the hard work that's been put in on this. We worked very hard on the Meadowwood project. If we could put the basic schematic up there, it'd be great, I'll refer to that. We worked very hard to deliver as high a quality of project as possible, especially, I know, this higher-density product is a little bit new here. I think you have some projects like it, but this project and the one you just heard to the north are new and important to the city. And these high-density lots for single-family residential houses, the approach the applicant took was, again, to provide as much quality as possible within the context of the eighty-eight lots on a very limited amount of acreage here. For example, I'll give you two examples as we start here. There are a lot of project details and we're happy to answer many nice features in the project that Ken went through. A lot of thoughtful things in the project, a lot of thoughtful features. But just two I want to point out, on Fulton Avenue there, you'll see the frontage on Fulton is the full fifty feet called for by your specific plan. That's a very nice area with the sidewalk and the landscaping. And I think it's going to be a dramatic streetscape, both for people driving past there, people walking past there. Just really a pretty stunning and unusual feature for a San Joaquin Valley project. Fifty feet, very rich, we didn't ask for any concessions on that fifty feet. You get the full fifty feet that's in the specific plan. The other facility you heard about goes, it's kind of the bottom third of the project, that Paseo Tot Lot Park facility that goes through the project. The specific plan shows such a facility going through it. The specific plan calls for eighteen to twenty-five feet. We went above and beyond that, that's a thirty-foot facility to capture the richness. The project developer really believes in those paths and it's very nice. You'll see through our project, you only have to cross one road to access the full length of the paseo. So we're very proud of those kind of facilities. So, you know, we had a very high-quality project and, you know, we started on this. The project applicant, it predates my involvement in this, I'm pretty new to the project, but I know that the city decided to do a specific plan. So the applicant has, once that decision was made, we provided all the information the city needed to go through that process. And that's been a multi-year process, as you know, I think maybe four years or more, maybe. So we, you go through that process and the issue here is, and I do disagree with one characterization of your staff. I mean, there were some late costly additions to it. And one, you heard about the safe route to schools, appropriate, you know, understandable that you would want to study that. We and the other project split the study cost. We've costed those out at about, you know, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for those improvements. And then you heard a lot about the undergrounding. And I think that while the specific plan suggests that, yes, it will be undergrounded, it's not at all clear in the specific plan, in my reading of it, that the first project is absolutely responsible for the undergrounding. We have seventy-five feet of frontage of the undergrounding of the S S G I D lateral. And the rest of it goes down to the frontage of the tech commercial area that the city desires to open up. And very great prospect there, it's a really nice plot of land. And so in addition to being a safety issue, at the planning commission, the staff identified it, I think appropriately, as also an economic development issue to get that lateral undergrounded for, because I think if I recall correctly, the staff was fearful that the retail commercial tech or the commercial tech land there would have difficulty paying for the undergrounding. You know, I will point out that I think that the S S G I D letters, they just say you have to deal with it. And they don't necessarily say you have to underground it. The S S G I D sent the exact same language to the project you just heard, the same concern about this lateral that was not taken up for some reason. It was all put on this project. So with that said, the the fronting of these newer requirements, or at least newer to us, really called into question the financial feasibility of the project. And so we've kind of been gnashing our teeth and sharpening our pencils and trying to figure out what to do. And so we, and I presented one option at the planning commission, for example, on maybe delaying the undergrounding, you know, timing thing that as funds were developed, maybe underground it later. But as we thought about it, we considered a number of options. We, you know, since it's partly an economic development initiative, do we ask the city to help on the undergrounding? Can we do an interim safety measure, some sort of fencing while funds are built up to underground it? And then other, some sort of other delay on that. Also, we thought about degrading the project, you know, we talked about the full fifty feet on Fulton and the kind of above the minimum walkway park there. And so we thought of that, well, do we kind of start over and take out some costs so we can fund the undergrounding? At the end of the day, we sort of rejected all of those. We're happy to revisit them if they sound better than, you know, what we're going to talk about tonight. But I just wanted the council to understand some of the thinking we've had through here. So the way we have considered getting this done, I guess I'll call it the cash flow solution through some flexibility and fee credits. And I'm sorry, we've been working on this almost every day and since the planning commission and can hand this out to the council and staff. So the way we've thought about how can we agree to all the conditions and get them done in a way that makes sense, you know, two things basically would have to happen. And there are some assumptions built into this, like, you know, there's been some chatter that there might be a less costly alternative to the safe route to schools. So that would be great if that were true, because, you know, for us, this is on the feasibility bubble. And we understand that's not your problem, it's our problem. But we're just trying to figure out a way to get the safety issues done, the safe route to schools, the undergrounding of the lateral and the economic development benefits of the lateral undergrounding, so that other land is opened up in the context of an eighty-eight lot project, which is no mean feat when you try to put it together. So the chart I handed out sort of briefly attempts to show that each building permit in the project will pay about fifty-four thousand dollars in city impact fees combined the your citywide P F F P program and your specific plan fee. So that's about over four-point-seven million dollars in fees that would throw off. The Meadowwood, for for us to build everything, and by everything, I mean the items listed on the bottom of the page as reimbursable projects, that would cost that two-and-a-half million dollars, or about twenty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars per building permit. So that we sort of propose as a credit and the city would still get the twenty-five thousand dollars a lot in those two fee programs for two-point-two million dollars to the city through the life of the eighty-eight acres or the eighty-eight lot project on the minimal acreage. So the one, I guess I'll call it a new item, is the, what we propose to do is build the Paseo Tot Lot facility to your mini park standard in your P F F P program. And that would make it eligible for reimbursement in the P F F P. And if that happens and we can accelerate the reimbursement by using these fee credits, all within the context of the eighty-eight lots, that's how we can achieve the safety concerns on the safe route to schools and the undergrounding and the economic benefit of undergrounding the lateral to open up that land for job-creating uses. So again, we considered the other solutions, options I went through before and rejected them. We're happy to revisit any of those. So this is, this is with a lot of hard work and a lot of thinking this through, instead of coming here and saying, we can't build this, we can't build that. We're happy to come here and say, we can build everything with council action to provide the accelerated fee credit reimbursement. I think the benefits of this approach, I may be repetitive, but I'd just like to state them again. You get the safe route to schools, you get the safety component of the undergrounding of the lateral. You get the economic development component of the lateral undergrounding. You get the fullest quality project we could provide without concessions on major features such as the very rich fifty-foot landscaping on Fulton Avenue and oversized or beyond the minimum width of paseo, in addition to the many other features that were described by your staff. So that's how we can make it feasible and get done, I think, everything the cities asked for. And we're ready to accept all the conditions of approval. We didn't degrade the project. We achieved the key safety and economic development goals of the city. And what we would need in a motion approving it is just it to be clear that if we build the paseo to a mini park standard, that becomes a reimbursable item under your P F F P program. And then the fee credit program is accelerated, as described in the sheet that hand out, to kind of make it reimbursed internally to the project. And then that's how, that's how we see a feasible route here. So I know it's a lot to digest, I'm happy to answer any questions because I'm sure I've left details out. And I'm sure Ken and Tom will have many reasons why this can't work. And I look forward to hearing those too, because we didn't have a chance to run it by them, so.
I think it's unfair that at seven-ten on the evening that the board is, or the council has been asked to make a decision on something that we get what amounts to a quantum shift in the funding package for that project. I'm not going to sit here and discuss this for the next twenty minutes or next forty-five minutes or next hour. That's not what we're here for. That's what they're here for. And if this is the approach that the developer wants to take, then my position is, then we continue this thing for a couple of months until everybody's had a chance to see what's going on, so that I understand it.
Any other comments on that?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. So I fully agree, because I'm looking at this and I think I understand the numbers, but I don't know what the full impacts are. So I couldn't make a decision tonight either. But I do have a couple of comments for Ken. Ken, so this project abuts directly south of the project we just approved, correct?
Yes, correct.
So the question I have, because when I put these together, when I was looking at it originally, then it stands out again today. How is that, I'm trying to envision myself driving down the road and seeing, you know, a hundred feet of block wall and then you get into a project where homes are coming on to Goodwin. Isn't that going to kind of break it up and look kind of sloppy? Or not, maybe it won't, maybe it'll look fine, maybe it'll look like a separation of projects. I can't envision it, I'm asking.
So what you had, so what's the North Point plan called for, is that buffer, that's why there's that buffer there? It's that, I don't know how many feet that was, thirty-some feet was the requirement of that buffer for the North Point plan, thirty-four feet from the sidewalk to that. So you either had to have houses that would front on that, on to Fulton there, or even or side on to Fulton, so they've chosen.
Okay, so it meets the plan.
They've chosen to side the houses on to that and then the block wall actually there is a six-foot, like, masonry combination fence.
He's talking on Goodwin, not Fulton.
Oh, Goodwin?
Well, on Goodwin, if you take a look, bring, if you can bring up the.
There's Goodwin.
One of the maps. Okay, so, you know, the one before, okay, so down here at the bottom, just right there, so you've got a wall here, correct, at the bottom?
Right, so.
So when you're driving down Goodwin, you're going to have a block wall for a period and then you're going to have homes coming out on to Goodwin.
And that's why there's a landscape buffer there to help buffer some of that. As you recall, in the North Point plan, we had this piece of property down here on Goodwin is actually a flex piece of property. It could have gone either residential, because that was a desire, I think, of the property owner at that time, or it could go actually what they call that mixed-use or tech commercial zoning. So it could have been either way. If it was tech commercial, it would have a building, possibly something similar to what's built there and would fit in there. What they've chosen to do is kind of backload those with that, with the houses there and then put the masonry wall to kind of divide that from the residential. It will look a little different than the ones that are there that are facing the street, so it'll have a little different look. I don't necessarily think it's going to be a bad look, but.
Okay. Again, like I said, I can't envision it, but I, when I put them together, I was trying to, trying to do that. So is this entire project above our minimum standards, is what I'm hearing, that we have minimums and this project's above that minimum?
In my opinion, this project meets our standards. They're meeting the standards of the North Point plan. They're talking about the central paseo that's going through the project being wider than what the North Point plan calls for. However, there is an easement that runs through there from M I D, so I think they're just obviously going underneath the easement and landscaping that. There's really nothing else you can do underneath that. So is it wider than what's called for on the North Point plan as far as the width of a paseo? Yes. Is it something that's a buildable area for them because there's M I D overhead power lines? No. So what else do you do with that? You either make it a street or you do some landscaping on it. But everything else is basically complying with the North Point plan.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is I kept hearing something about, well, we could degrade it to make the project financially, or, but I mean, what does degrading mean? Can they really reduce some of this to where it just doesn't look right, but it still meets the standards?
They can relay out the entire project if they want to try to do something different in there, I guess. But besides what you're looking at here, I'm not sure.
Okay, I just question, thanks.
Hey, Ken, will you go back to the slide of the retaining walls, please? So the blue is the higher of the two, am I understanding that correctly, or is that the lower of the two?
The blue is the lower, it's a six-foot and it's what they're calling a privacy fence or privacy, this privacy wall here. So it's more of a wrought iron, kind of open look. And they are going to have that kind of on the side of the houses here. There is a fair amount of open space at the end of these driveways. So the fence would come up to the edge of the house and then this rest, this would be open, keep that open look. Those are obviously six-foot in height, which is typical of a regular residential fence that you see in town. Just a little bit better quality there. We'll have that thirty-four-foot landscape buffer between that and the sidewalk. And then the eight-foot masonry wall, again, is our standard in our ordinance as far as separating residential property and commercial or non-residential property. So that's what you're seeing along here. If you would envision that, that's going to be, there's an eight-foot masonry wall along Milljo out by Barton Ranch. Also Chesapeake Landing along River Road, it'd be very similar to those two types.
Is the other project going to have that?
No, so the other project decided to do a frontage road to actually get the houses further back off of Fulton. So they've got a landscape area and then they have a roadway within their project. It's like a frontage road, it's kind of what's on the other side of Fulton, with the Meritage Homes. So they've decided to kind of go that route and that actually gives that buffer to get those houses back off of Fulton. So they don't necessarily have any walls on the other projects because of the way they designed it.
Okay, so it's just going to be two different designs then when it comes to this. I guess my concern would, it would be, I just would like there to be some seamlessness as much as possible. I understand it's two different projects, two different builders and all of that, but I. I just, I want to make sure it doesn't look clunky and it adds to the area. Because that's my concern, is having one without it directly next to one with it. So, that's, that's my concern when it comes to those two things.
We sort of have that on River Road already. We have a block wall for Chesapeake Landing.
Yeah.
We've got a school on one end with no, on the, next to it, across the street, and then going the other direction, we're going to have commercial development that's going to front on the River Road. So, it's not an uncommon occurrence.
Right, and it's not a...
And if it's done this way, it's going to be fine. You're not going to notice the wall.
Well, and that's the thing. I mean, I, it's not a huge objection for me. I just want to make sure that, that there is some kind of continuity to it and that it does look nice through that. I'm not totally objecting to it. I just, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
You do have differences in the, obviously you have two different designers and developers putting forth the plans, so they are different than each other.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just quickly, if there are no more questions for the applicant's representative, and we are in the middle of a public hearing, I know this has raised questions for council members, and we can certainly address those at the right time. If there are other questions for the applicant's representative, there might be other folks who want to speak tonight.
Anybody from the public want to make comment on the project? Seeing nobody. Do you? Well, same, okay, sorry, didn't see him. Stand up.
My name is Mike Turn, 623 Shasta. I'm kind of curious about the Shasta-Fulton intersection, what you plan to do with that, being that that's one of two ways for people to get out, you know, to exit and enter into these subdivisions. So, I understand that Fulton will be widened to, I guess, four lanes across. I'm curious, are there plans to put four-way stops, left turn, dedicated left turn lanes, traffic lights, that kind of thing? Because it looks like it's going to end up being a pretty busy intersection once it's all said and done and finished, being that, like I said, it's one of two ways out. So, I'm kind of curious, I haven't heard anything about what the plans are for that particular intersection, and what, how, how are you going to handle the traffic that will most likely be coming in through there? Thank you.
Ken?
So, Fulton Avenue will not have stop signs on it. Fulton Avenue is meant to be a thoroughfare. There'll be stop signs on Shasta, coming out of the project, and there's already a stop sign on Shasta now. There will be dedicated left turn pockets coming into the project, also left dedicated turn pocket, which would be able to turn onto Shasta heading east, too. So, that's the, that's the intent of the design of that intersection there.
Anybody else from the public? Is it the council? So...
I've got a question.
Yeah.
The Paseo under the specific plan is required. If they meet the, for, on the list of eligible items for credit, if it meets the requirements for the mini park, is that a reimbursable item even though the, or is it, are they looking at it the right way, I guess? Is it the definition of it as a mini park, is the entire thing considered a mini park if it is included with meets the standards, or are we doubling up there? Or how does, I'm trying to get clarification on how that would actually work for reimbursement?
So, the Paseos here that you're seeing, in the North Point Plan, the only Paseo that's got reimbursable cost is that main Paseo, which is not in, within this project. The main Paseo runs from Colony all the way to River Road. It's that 50-foot wide Paseo. That's what we are collecting money for through the North Point Plan. These Paseos here were just, these are what they're called smaller residential Paseos through the project. This was a natural, obviously, when the project was being developed because of the power lines to do something underneath them, so that's why they were designed that way. But there's not cost, there's not money being collected for reimbursement on those. I don't know if Kevin can answer more of the question on the many lots as far as the PFFP fee would go on those. We do, we did reduce the parks and rec fees for this project because we are having parks built here. We didn't want to double dip on that. So, there is a reduction in our parks fees for projects within the North Point area because they are supplying some of these things. But Kevin, I don't know if you have an answer more for that?
It's a good point. You're exactly right. Those items were not collecting fee revenue from those, so.
Right, and they're, but they're asking for reimbursement as it, through this, through their program here, asking for reimbursement for that.
Yeah, and we can get in, I have a couple of thoughts.
I don't know if we want to close the public hearing before...
If there are no more questions, either the applicant or anybody else in the audience, let's close the public hearing, and then we can come back and address some of these items.
We'll close the public hearing, seeing nobody else.
So, with the, I mean, obviously, just looking at this for a few minutes now, you know, this is called a cash flow solution. I think from our perspective, it's probably a fee reduction request in our AB-1600 program. We've dealt with this in other areas, as you recall. The problem with this is we're collecting money to support development, so that pays for the new wells that we do, expansion to our sewer treatment plant, et cetera, you know, expansion of roadways. That's how we fund all that. If the new development is not paying their share of that cost, it comes back onto the city to figure out how to pay for those expenses. So, these type of fee reduction programs are a concern for, especially for residential development, but it's always a concern. We have talked a lot about this in talking about ways to provide a fee reduction program and incentive program. The program that you have now is related, is for commercial development. And what we do in those programs, we do offer an AB-1600 capital fee reduction program. But what the city does is that is funded through our general fund. So, the city pays money for those fees, and that's through our general fund because we have to make sure those fees are made whole as we need new wells and infrastructure is needed, and also for the integrity of that capital improvement program. Obviously, I think the BIA is going to start having concerns if it's not, if growth is not paying its share, as well as the residents. So, but with that program, the city's general fund pays those, pays into those capital fees, and then we are reimbursed over time with sales tax revenue. And so, the type of commercial development that falls within this program are ones that have, that meet certain thresholds of sales tax. So, we can be assured that we're being paid back in a reasonable amount of time for our investment into these businesses. So, to me, I think from a staff perspective, one of the concerns with this is really not a cash flow solution. It's a fee reduction. So, it's something for the city council to consider. If this is something you want us to vet out, we can go back and vet it out, or what your thoughts are about this as it relates to this development agreement and whether you're taking action tonight or putting back the staff to continue to discuss this.
Well, I mean, I think we have two councilmen that already stated that, so, I mean, everybody's fine with that. I don't have a problem with moving it on, but that's it to the council. I agree with both these guys, so.
Do, do we need a motion?
We motioned to review this.
I mean, if the, if the developer is serious about wanting to look at ways to handle the cost, that's fine. But I don't want to make a decision on that until staff has had a chance to look it over and come back with input and recommendations. And if that's what they want to do, then my motion would be to continue this item until such time as staff and the developer feel that it's appropriate to bring it back to the city council.
And I'll second that.
I think it's appropriate for staff to be able to evaluate it.
Yep.
And that's, we need to move it on.
Now, the, the public hearing is, has been closed, and so you would not be taking testimony from the public on any other items related to this project. You'd just be asking staff to go back and look at this, the issues raised by the developer in tonight's presentation on this, on the financial fiscal fee issues that have been raised here.
Yes.
And it would be limited to that. We would bring back a report from staff at the, at the next available meeting when we've gone through this analysis, and then bring that back with a staff recommendation on these particular items, and then the council could take action from there. Is that what you want to see?
Couldn't have said it better myself.
All right, very good.
Didn't show up. Okay.
Didn't get the results.
No, we didn't. It was 500.
We didn't get it, get it passed with the 500?
It did. Yeah.
Right.
Well, there's a motion to continue.
There's a motion to continue.
Yeah.
And it passed. Okay.
But we never seen a screen. We voted, but it didn't show the results. Okay, that's what I want to know, so, all right, we're moving on. Where are we now? I've lost my mind.
We're on E.
Okay, E, all right. This is a public hearing to consider amendments to Title 16, the Development Code of Amending Chapter 16.194 Affordable Housing. I believe, is this you, Ken?
Yeah, it's me again. As you know, this, in May of this last year, we went through kind of a comprehensive update of our affordable housing program, one in which that we're starting to see some of it, just starting to begin now with the Vineyards project out there where they're going to build houses that meet FHA lending requirements, which is kind of new to our program. So, now, as the program's nearing, kicking off here, and rubber's got to, you know, where the rubber meets the road, that it's been going through the ordinance and finding some spots in there where there needed to be a little bit more clarification. So, there's a recommendation here for an amendment here in front of you this evening, and I'll quickly go through it, just to kind of give you a heads up what was done. The entire ordinance was reorganized, just to kind of give the different options and a different layout, so it's easier, I think, for a staff and a developer's perspective to understand. We did add back in some of the requirements for BMR affordable housing. BMR is our old program, older program that we sell houses, and they are meant to reach out to a more limited income personnel or clientele. This one that we just sold on Acacia and Fourth was one of our BMR units. So, that thing, that house sold as a moderate unit, which sells in somewhere in the neighborhood $250,000. The FHA lending limits are up to 360, so it is a different, a different person we're reaching with some of these homes. So, we did add that provision back in the ordinance because if a developer so chooses, they can build BMR homes, it's just a lesser percentage requirement, but it does reach a different clientele. So, that was added back in with a lot of the definitions. With that, we had to come up with an in-lu fee calculation for those BMR units, so if a developer so chooses to, to not build a house and pay the city a fee instead, we should be able to go out and provide that same type of unit with the money that they give us. So, we should be able to take the money they give us and directly go buy a house and sell it at that level so that fee had to offset, provide that offset. So, that was added in. And then, one of the final things in here is when we went through this, when we went through the affordable housing requirements before, the FHA limits seemed like they were high at that point, and developers were hoping they would get that kind of money out of a house. Now, we're seeing houses that have escalated higher than that. And so, the limits are 360, but these houses are appraising for over like $400,000. They don't want to come in and build a house that only could sell for 360. So, they don't want to come in and make a smaller home or less of a quality home just so it appraises less. They'd still rather build a nice quality home. But with that being said, we don't want somebody to be able to get into this program and in day, you know, day two, when they're in the house, be able to turn around and sell it and pocket, say, like 40 or 50 grand just because there's that built-in equity when they buy it. So, essentially, what would happen is if the house appraises for more than the FHA upper limit, the city would put in the difference into the escrow account, and the sales price would now be the appraised price. So, let's just say the house appraised for 400,000, they can't sell it for more than 360. So, we would put in the 40,000 into the escrow account, the buyer would go get a loan from the first lender for 360 to go into escrow. The sales price of the house would be 400. At the close of escrow, that money would come back to the city, so it does, it's not, we're not losing that money, it does come directly back to us. But what that does is if somebody wants to sell their house and clear the liens on their home, they have to come up with 400,000, 360,000 to pay the first lender, and then the 40,000 to pay us back what was, what was on the house. So, the money stays in the program at that point, and somebody's not able just to pocket a city money or a government program and walk away with that money and see it as profit. Now, if the house does appraise or go up higher in value than 400,000 at some point in time, the homeowner at that point can realize that equity. So, if they, if it sells for 420 at some point in time, they owe us back 40, they can pocket that extra 20 if they want. That's, that's what most people do with houses. You buy a house for an investment. So, the difference in here, one of the adjustments in here was that the city would be putting in that second if the house does appraise for higher than the FHA limit. But again, like I said, that money does come back to us. It's not like it's, it's not like we're putting that money in and it goes to the developer or anything like that. So, those are the essence of the changes that you're seeing here in front of you tonight. Like I said, it was a total revamp of the ordinance, so it looked like a lot of changes went on. All we did was kind of reorganize a lot of things on it. But at that point, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and be happy to answer any questions. And again, this is a public hearing, so we do have to open it up for the public to comment if they wish.
Okay, anybody from the public want to make comment on this item? Seeing nobody, we'll close public hearing. City council questions, or Mr. Zuber?
I have a handful. I'll get rid of the easy ones first. There's some, I don't know if they're organizational, typographical, or what. But in section 16.194.050, it starts with A, B, C, and then goes to G.
I already, I did correct those, so those will be in the next version for you to catch this.
And in the same section, section G6, there's two I's. I'm assuming the other one's second I, and then there's a word in there about load. I must have read that three times before I finally figured it out. It's not load, it's loan.
Right.
Okay.
Those have been corrected already for you.
Now, I'll go to the big questions. This ordinance has a mix of what I'm going to call FHA-type homes and BMR homes. I don't see anywhere in there where there's any kind of control over where, which it is. In other words, what if every developer comes in here and says, "Well, hey, it's easier to sell the FHA-type homes, so that's all we're going to build." And pretty soon, we got those things running out of our ears, and we're doing nothing for the low and moderate-type people. Can we tell a developer, "Nope, you can't do those anymore. We got enough of those, we want you to do these"?
Currently, the way the ordinance is written, it's more the developer's choice. There's, like I said, there's actually four options in there for them to choose from. There's an FHA limit, which means they got to give 10% of the homes as FHA limits. They can choose to do the BMR, which is actually a bigger subsidy, obviously, that has to be put in. So, they can do 5% of a development as BMR homes. They can pay an in-lu fee, just buy out of it totally, and then at some point, the city will use that money to do some affordable housing projects or different things for affordable housing in town. And then, lastly, they can come to us with a plan we've never heard of, but it's got to meet requirements. It can't, it can't amount to less than what would have been produced on their site, and they've got to show us that it provides a benefit. So, someone might not want to build affordable homes on their, in their project per se, but they might buy five acres somewhere else and say, "We'll put up condo units here," or something like that. And if it's something we feel, there's an affordable housing committee, which is two council members, planning commissioner. If it's something that that committee feels is appropriate, then it would be brought to the city council for final approval on something like that. So, those are your four options that are available, but at this point, it's the developer's choice of how they want to handle it. So, you could have an overrun on FHA-type homes meeting affordability and not any BMRs or anything like that.
So, if it got to be a problem, we'd have to come back here and change the ordinance?
That is correct.
Okay. The city subsidy that's meant, that you talked about to get the price right, is there any interest charged for that? I mean, if we had to put $40,000 up to get the house sold, and they sell it 10 years later, do you get 40 grand back?
That's the proposal that's in front of you tonight, is to not have an interest component on it, just money out, money back in. It's what they owe us. I mean, we get our money back right away anyway, so that money's in a bank account here earning interest, but they did get a benefit of receiving a $40,000 or whatever that amount is, you know, benefit, so that...
So, the only thing, time it becomes an issue is if they turn around and sell the thing for more, that's when we get it back?
That's correct.
If they turn around, sell it for 360 or less, we never, we never lost anything.
Basically, they, it is a lien on the property, so it does have to clear. So, if they, if they can't sell it for the amount, say it's, say it's, let's just use examples of $400,000, say they can't sell a house for that, they still have to clear that lien, so they need to have to come to the city and ask for like a short sale on it. Or there is options for them to actually to sell it to another FHA, in this instance, say, an FHA-qualified buyer, and then we would waive that subsidy for... And then we would waive that subsidy for them, and then we would establish a new subsidy with the new buyer. So there's a way out for them if they so wished, but they do have to find another qualified buyer.
Great. There's another section that says that the developer will oversee the sale of the affordable units. I thought when we talked about this, when we first did it, we were going to do that because we didn't want potential conflicts or issues of favoritism and that sort of stuff showing up.
We've been back and forth on that one a little bit. Now, that was one that was discussed just more recently and is part of this amendment here. It's develop, it's one of the developments we've been dealing with on this project, this one that's coming, so it's not the only one we're going to deal with. But it is asking, is it, do you really want to be dealing with this at staff level here? They thought it would be a better idea for them to deal with vetting the people out and then the city just overseeing the selection process. I think the biggest concern with the selection process was to make sure it was some sort of lottery system where it was fair. And in the past, when developers were able to build some of these homes, they were the ones out selling the homes and choosing the buyers. So now, it's more of whoever can qualify. If they get 10 applicants that qualify, then they would be put into the lottery system and drawn at random, whoever, whoever kind of gets chosen can buy that house, just city oversight. So the intention, as you can, I don't know if you've read through here, there is a section here talking about, in order to qualify, there's a resolution that would be put together that is approved by the city council. That is something that staff intends to bring back in front of city council here shortly. It's kind of a requirements for qualification, also requirements of selection and how to process the selection and how this whole process would work, would be in that resolution.
Got it. I guess my only response would be I would prefer that, whatever language is in there, that it somehow gives the city some sort of an active role in that. Because oversight simply means finding the problem after it's too late, and I don't want that either. So I mean, maybe, fine, they qualify, and then they come here and we look at them before the drawing occurs or something so that we know.
Right.
And that people feel like they can come to us and say, hey, I applied for three of those houses and I got shut out every time. Well, give us your stuff and we'll see what, what the problem is.
And the process could be outlined. Like I said, I don't know exactly what that is yet at this point until we put the resolution together. But the process could be outlined as they work with the developer or the builder on the project, get pre-qualified with some lenders here in town that know the program or know what the requirements of the program are. And then they walk into here with an application and they automatically get put into a lottery system. So the difficult part is, as we just discovered, obviously with the house that we just sold on Acacia and Fourth is, and luckily, we didn't get a ton of applications for that, but you got staff here trying to go through 10 to 15 applications to ensure that they qualify income-wise, and we're not necessarily experts on that, and it does take a lot of staff time to do that. So it's kind of kick that responsibility back to the developer and a lender to kind of go through that heavy lifting of it. And then when they come in the door, we know they're pre-qualified, so we can, we can just do, we can do the lottery portion of that process.
Okay.
Their process is normally selling houses to the people as they build them. So I mean, they're, they're choosing the people and seeing if they're qualified to buy them normally, so this is an additional step.
We've had problems where somebody has picked somebody and made sure they got the one, and we can't go back there. Yeah.
Right. But with oversight, I think you can solve that, so.
Well, I agree. I just want...
Just to make sure we have it, yeah.
Want it in there, yeah. Last one I have, I noticed someplace, I don't remember exactly what the scenario was, but there was reference to a 10-year note. I don't remember why, but somebody could have that attached to their payment. But it said it was at 1% above the rate that they had for their mortgage. Why are we doing that?
That was a, I think, a carryover from past some of our, some of the programs that we had as far as trying to make sure. Obviously, a second mortgage typically is higher interest rate than a first mortgage. So that's kind of a carryover, a carryover from that is why it ended up in here. So, you know, second mortgage has a little bit more, I think, risk involved in it is why that was put in there. So that's why it's in here that way. It could obviously be discussed amongst you guys if you'd like.
I guess the reason I'm wondering is, we just talked about a note that's going to have no interest attached to it. We're trying to get people into houses who can't, without help, can't get in there, and then we're throwing something like that in. I, I don't understand it. I, if we're going to, if it's a 3.5% mortgage and we're got this other note in there, then make it 3.5%. You guys got enough to do without keeping track of all this stuff. My opinion. I'm done.
So are we moving on, or are you going to fix all that?
Well, this is a, this is a public hearing, and then here later on in the agenda, you'll have a first reading and introduction. So if you do want to do, if you do want to include some of those changes that Mr. Zubor just talked about there, it would be a good time to maybe...
Well, can I make a motion? Do we do the first, we can cha, make the first reading and adoption and still make changes before the second reading, correct?
You can, or you can, you can make the changes now and then before you do the first reading later on in the agenda.
My suggestion, unless there's objection, is one, take the 1% add-on off that 10-year note. What else did I talk about? And then your resolution, make sure that there's, I leave it to you, but some kind of active participation on the part of the city in the allocation of those homes.
And that, and that resolution will come back to you in any event, so.
Yeah, so the resolution would, the only change, the only change in the ordinance, what you're recommending would be to take the 1%.
1% off.
That can be fixed easily.
And then the other grammar stuff can be taken care of, too. Okay. So you need a motion for that, or can he just do that?
He can just, staff can make the changes per...
And then when we adopt it, we can adopt it with the changes that we talked about.
Yes, and that'll be here in a couple items.
Okay.
So are we done with that, and we can move on? You guys got done? Okay, moving on. Annual review of development agreements for a bunch of different subdivisions. We'll let, that's you, again.
That's me again. Sorry, I got most items on this agenda tonight. Every year, obviously, we go through the development agreements. It's a required process to review those pursuant to a Government Code section. So this year, we've got eight agreements that are still considered active, and they are listed in the staff report there for you, and it did include a map. So if you've got any questions on those, I'd be happy to go through them. If not, there is a motion in there and we can move on. This is a public hearing, too.
We open to a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? I'll close public hearing. And any questions or, we need to make a motion on this one, though, right?
I'll make a motion to accept the development agreement. Annual review is presented.
Second. Can't just say it anymore.
Passes with the 5-0. And moving on to ordinances, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 868.
This is the second reading and adoption for the marijuana ordinance where we made the change that...
That was a good catch.
Building Department didn't have to approve all the permits.
Well, didn't it also change the, not if they grow, but if they actually build something to grow it in?
Then they have to get a permit.
Yeah, right, exactly. That was added to or changed.
Yeah, it was clarification of what was required of the building department. Only if they modify something building-wise is when they need a permit from the building department.
So I'm okay with it. Do we waive the second reading and adopt it, or do we accept the second reading and adopt? Okay, move to adopt.
Hit your buttons, boys.
Who gets the fastest click?
Passes 5-0.
Wake up, need some coffee down there.
B. B.
Yes, first reading and introduction of ordinance number 16.194, Rippen Municipal Code, to clarify affordable housing options pertaining to the sale of residential housing developments, to add in the lue fee calculation for BMR affordable housing units to amend required subsidy responsibilities for FHA affordable units. I guess this is Ken again.
This is what we just went through.
A move that we adopt to ordinance with the changes discussed earlier.
Second.
Okay, sorry.
Click your move, and I'll click my second.
Good, we don't have to hear from Ken again. Sorry, Ken. Okay, that was passed with a 5-0 vote, and now we're moving on discussion items.
They're going to get a 4-0 vote.
No, he, he voted before he left.
Okay. Financial audits fiscal year 2016, 2017. Is that Lisa?
Yep.
That's me.
Thank goodness. You're going to hear a lady's voice instead of yours.
The audits for the City of Ripon and the money purchase thrift pension plan for the fiscal year June 30th, 2017 have been completed. I did prepare a staff report that was in your packet that shows how the audit reconciles to the fund balance summaries that you guys usually see on a monthly basis. And Dave Dibis from Price Page is here to give a short report. And then, no action is required at this time. We will bring a resolution back in December for both of these audits.
I was concerned you were off seven bucks out of 35 million. I don't know, Lisa.
She was in Tommo last week. Don't record that, please.
It's already recorded.
Darn it.
You're on YouTube.
Mr. Mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to be here today, tonight, actually. My name's Dave Dibis. I'm Audit Manager with Price Page Company. We're in Clovis, California, and we are contracted to do the audit for the 2017 financial statements for City Ripon. So let's get started. On page one is our internal audit report. Just want to go through our report as well as the responsibilities for management, as well as for our responsibility as auditors, and a little bit about the audit process that we conducted each and every year. On page one, at the very top, it just plainly explains that we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the City of Ripon for the year ended June 30, 2017. We always want to highlight that management's responsibility is for these financial statements, for the fire presentation, for the financial statements that are in accordance with government auditing standards and that they are fairly represent the activities of the city for the year ended June 30, 2017. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements as they're presented. We do that by going through a sort of a process that Kevin and Lisa could attest to. We start early by getting the trial balance from Lisa, and we go through, as a part of our audit process, we import the trial balance to our software, and we do comparative analysis as well as ratio analysis from one year to the next just to look at anomalies from one year to the next, just to see where there might be some issues in regards to misstatements due to possibly error or fraud. Once we do that assessment, we also do an internal control walkthrough of the cities. They have policies and procedures, obviously, that they have to follow as part of their accounting department and financial reporting department. And we do walkthroughs to verify that the policies and procedures that are in place are actually implemented and working efficiently and effectively. We actually do, through cash receipts, cash insurance, and payroll, we do actually walk through that whole system to make sure that it's being accurately handled and all the checks and balances are in place. After we go through that, we do an assessment, a risk assessment, to further determine where we think there might be some issues in regards to the financial statement reporting. Maybe there's some new debt or something where it might be a newer area that might have a higher risk of error. We have a fraud brainstorming session at our office, and once we do that session, just trying to ascertain, trying to think of different ways that the city could possibly have a potential possibility for an error. And then we conduct our audit programs based on our brainstorming session. Once we do that, we ask staff to provide us source documents so we can trace directly back to transactions that are being represented in general ledger. We trace them back to the source documents to make sure that they're all authorized and all handled accordingly per fund. We believe that process gives us an opportunity to give us an opinion on your financial statements on page two. As you can see, we believe the financial statements referred to show the financial position of the City of Ripon for 2017. That's an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion. We have no issues in regards to the financial reporting, as well as any type of compliance of city funds and how they're spent. There's any questions possibly on the audit process that's conducted?
How many cities do you, does your agency audit?
About 15. We do a couple of counties and do about 15 cities.
This is probably a crazy question, but how did our city, does it match up to doing their...
Actually, your city is quite well. I was talking about earlier with Lisa. The internal controls that are in place and just the internal daily processes, I believe, whether it be a year, a lot of people have to go through a year-end closing process, per se, and they have a challenge trying to harness all the information from all the departments to make sure that everything is brought into the accounting department in a timely fashion so they can make the proper transactions and post them correctly and have them have a chance for review. This is one of the earlier cities that we issue an opinion on. Most of other ones, we still have staff out at other cities currently right now doing year-end fieldwork. So your city compared to others that we do audit, yours is commendable to the processes that are in place and how they're being operated.
You can, so it's all because of Lisa then, right?
Kevin, Lisa, the staff, the people down in the, day-to-day, down in the trenches, I guess you could say.
We have an auditor right here, too, just in case you...
That always helps, too.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody got any questions? Oh, he's not? I interrupted you? Oh, I thought you were done, darn it.
Oh, no, well, I just wanted to say in the same vein with the pension audit, also, we do the same transactions and detailed transactions of testing of employee contributions and straight to the Bank of Stockton, and we had no issues in that regard. There was maybe a little bit of a timing issue, I think, on a couple of deposits that we traced that we noted to management, only because I think it was a signature on a check at one time, and then Bank of Stockton kind of had a delay on a deposit from one day to the next. So it kind of made a little bit of delay, but we noted to management, and it was something that they took care of. Other than that, everything was fine. I'm sorry?
I read them both, and I was happy with both of them.
Terrific.
Thanks, Lisa.
Very much.
Okay. So do we...
Budget.
Need a...
No, no action.
No action on that? Okay, just a discussion. I'm right. Okay. And then FY 2017, 18, okay, there you go, FY fiscal year. Staff is recommending the City Council consider approving the following staffing changes. I won't read them all. And is that you, Kevin?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I think we've had some pretty extensive discussions on all these items throughout the most recent budget process. So I won't go into a lot of that. Just wanted to hit on a couple of the high points. We did close out the fiscal year 1617, and we ended up with a general fund surplus of $1.286 million. So as, as described in our general fund surplus policy, 33% of that amount is set aside for future roadway reconstruction. So that, with the minimum 33%, that would be $424,552 that would be set aside, again, according to the council's policy. I did meet and reviewed all, actually, this whole memo and all these recommendations with the City Council Budget Committee, and that includes Councilmember Roushia and Councilmember Zubor. They also recommended that an additional $125,000 of the surplus be transferred to the Street and Road Reserve Fund. So that total would be $549,552. That was the fund that was used to fund the Stockton Avenue parking lot. We're projecting, once that project is complete and with these funds being transferred over, that account would end up with about $1.27 million.
That's going to be available money?
Yes.
So what's our next project?
For Street and Road and with the policy, it requires City Council action. So if there, and it is for the reconstruction of a roadway. It wasn't for maintenance of roadways. It's for the reconstruction of those roadways. So, you know, if it'd be anything from Stockton Avenue or, you know, a road such as that, that does require reconstruction.
Cool. That's awesome.
The other part of this memo, there is a table on here that... The other part of this memo, there is a table on here that summarizes the proposed general fund capital purchases. This is an item that's probably evolved quite a bit in the last year, talking with the city council and the budget committee. We have made a lot of efforts to, we've always had a general fund capital fund, but we made a lot of efforts to probably be a little bit more disciplined about replacing items. We've talked a lot about, like with police cars, for example, to not get them all bunched up in one year to start spreading them out. We've taken that same approach with a number of items on here. In addition to the police cars, body worn cameras, the mesh cameras, computers, et cetera, those are all examples of items that we're just getting on a normal rotation. The other thing we do is we've calculated how much money needs to be set aside each year. You know, in the past, I think we've kind of looked at surpluses and what was available, we put it in here. We got a little bit more rigor, I guess you could say, as far as how much is being transferred. This account, this general fund capital account, also pays for those items. So, it's not just a reserve account, but this is where we're putting in money to pay for them, and when the items need to be replaced, this is where we're paying for them from. So, most of these items on this list in table two are replacing existing items, just a couple I would point out that are new items. This does include a portion of the new license plate readers. You may recall, the project on Starbucks and the gas station, their project improvement increments require them to pay a portion of a license plate reader. So, this is our share to add one at the on-ramp from ninety-nine, southbound and northbound at the main street, overpass, and then same thing with the residential projects we talked about tonight. Those did include a share of cameras, so this also includes a share, the city's share the cost of a camera at Highway ninety-nine in the Milljoe off-ramp. Also includes a large shed for the police department. This would be where motorcycles and such would be stored, it'd be in the back parking lot here, and then Public Works has requested a Thatcher and a sweeper. As I understand it, this is something that would help us maintain our fields, specifically the sports fields at Missland Sports Park and Stover Field, keep them healthy and for the sports activities in those fields. So, that total cost is two hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The other thing that we've talked quite a bit about is the CalPERS and the unfunded liability. Obviously, there are some large changes that are happening July twenty eighteen. CalPERS Board is lowering the discount rate from seven and a half percent to seven percent. That has a large impact to the city's unfunded liability and increases our liability going forward. One of the things I would note, I don't say it in here, but as I understand it, the CalPERS Board is meeting in December, and they're considering lowering that even more, on the order of six percent. So, something we're watching closely is that will have a large financial impact on the city. What's that?
Faced in.
Faced in, right. And this one's phased in, too. This is phased in over seven years.
But I guess, why aren't from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it's seven hundred and eleven thousand, then in nineteen twenty it drops? It looks to me, it seems to me like it would just be steadily going up.
Yeah, what that is, and Lisa, you may have to help remind me, we've asked this question to PERS. There was a certain liability that we've been paying on for a number of years when we went into the pool program. My understanding is, and we have the calculations for it, but that liability's last payment happens in June or twenty eighteen, nineteen, am I correct?
Yeah, but you know, then if it?
You're paying off an unfunded liability.
But it almost doesn't make sense, because if you look at two thousand eighteen, it's seven eleven, okay, then I get the fact what you just said there, but then when you go to two thousand twenty, it's only up six thousand from two thousand eighteen, so to me, it really doesn't seem legitimately, well, just to be right.
Because what you've got is your unfunded liabilities that pay off over time.
There's a payment that we're making that we get to stop making.
Yeah.
Yeah, goofy, trust me, it's goofy.
They sent us our spreadsheet that they use to calculate all this. We have a number of different liabilities that are amortized over different periods of time, so it is pretty convoluted how they do this. But when you look at the details of it, it does make sense, because we questioned the same thing, it didn't look right.
Well, some get added, some get reduced because of the amortization.
Exactly.
And rolls over like five or seven years or fifteen, I mean, when you look at all the spreadsheets, it makes sense.
Yeah, and an example, what they'll do is, if there's a loss in return on their investment, they amortize that over a period of time also. So, you don't get the large financial hit as part of the smoothing out, but those are all getting amortized every year as there's losses. So, one of the things we talked about during the budget process, and table three in here does show what the projected annual payment was, and what it would be if we made different prepayment to CalPERS, as you may recall, we talked about the idea of that during the budget process. So, on here, if we made a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, you see the annual reduction in each of those years going forward. And then, the same is true for the different amounts that I put on there, just to kind of have an understanding of the impact of it, or the order of magnitude that we're talking about as we pre-fund this. What's difficult with this, and I've talked to a number of people, the city of Stockton has had a lot of experience with PERS over the years, and I met with Kurt Wilson, the city manager there, and his finance director, and talked about this. And there's no right or wrong answer, as you talk about prepaying the unfunded liability. Unfortunately, if you had a very clear crystal ball of what the stock market was going to do, it would make it easy. But what's hard is if you make a very large prepayment into that and the stock market goes down, it was a bad decision, because they had more money to lose in the stock market. If you make a large prepayment and the stock market goes up, it was great, because you made more money on that. So, what's being recommended right now, and this is a fairly conservative approach, but making the prepayment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that would be an actual check that we write to PERS to pay a portion of our unfunded liability, and you see on here what the savings would be per year, and then the remaining amount of the sixteen, seventeen surplus, which would be about four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, that's after you take out the street and road transfer and the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'd be paying to CalPERS. That would go into a City of Ripon CalPERS reserve account, and that would help us going forward to deal with some of the unfunded liability payments. And also, you know, we'll watch very closely, we get all the, our actuarial breakouts from PERS, and we'll wash that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and bring back to council whether that makes sense or not makes sense.
Would we control that, is that what you're saying?
We don't control it, but we could at least evaluate whether that was a good decision, bad decision, and incrementally decide.
Because once you write that check, it's gone, right?
Yeah, yes, but it doesn't go into this, you know, three hundred billion dollar fund. We actually, it goes into our separate accounting that they get to watch.
Well, that makes sense.
It gets isolated out.
Sure, I mean, we all probably know that they're in the situation they are because of bad investments in the past.
Right.
And we're paying for it.
So, we could incrementally watch that and determine if more money from this reserve account, if we wanted to prepay a portion of our unfunded liability.
It's not just bad investments, it's also vested benefits that were given that never should have been given, because markets were up and everything got given away, and they weren't just one time, they were vested, so you got to pay them regardless of what returns are.
Right. And lastly, we talked about a lot about staffing at the, on the last budget session, so I'm not going to get into that. The bottom line, as I have met quite a bit with department heads, and what I'm recommending is that we hire a new patrol officer. Talking with Chief Armandy, this is somebody that would be assigned to the graveyard shift to provide additional coverage. There's also some benefits of overtime with providing that, some likely reductions in overtime. We are also recommending that a, we currently have a part-time animal control officer, that position be reclassified to a part-time community service officer. Also, with public works staffing, there was a number of items that were included in the seventeen, eighteen budget. One of the most significant for the public works department was looking at our landscape maintenance districts and bidding that out to hire contractors to come in and take those over, take those, the staff that we have now maintaining those districts, put those in other areas of the public works department to provide additional resources in those areas. So, before we start looking too much more at the staffing and adding more staff in public work, we want to take a little time to evaluate that. But one of the things that, talking with Ted, that we thought was important was to reclassify one of the public works foreman positions to supervising foreman. There is four foreman positions right now, this would not be an additional foreman position, it would be simply taking one of those positions and reclassifying it to a?
Kind of like we did in the police department, right? Similar, basically.
Right. Those staffing changes, the total annual cost to the general fund is just over one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Obviously, these are not all getting implemented day one of fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. We're estimating the impact to this fiscal year being on the order of eighty-five thousand dollars. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody?
I have one. Actually, I have two. The first one has to do, is somewhere in that report, on page four hundred and eighty-seven of the packet. It talks about, one of the changes that was made this year was to reallocate public work staff away from water and into parks and landscape maintenance. So, how are we doing? Do we still have a water guy? And where's it coming from if it's not this? How, is it being paid some other way?
It's being paid for the?
From the water, water fund. So, it's a separate person now, not a real? Okay, that was one. Number two, I looked at your little table, the six point six million dollar table, and I asked you the question about what the annual thing was. Might seem petty, but it's not to me, because I'm more of a long-term person. We moved four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into the capital fund, or reserve fund. We spent two hundred and ninety-three thousand of that, so we actually put in a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. But your chart shows that the annual cost, so that we can replace that stuff, is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year. I added up that whole column, just to see. So, for me, rather than sending four hundred and whatever, eighty-nine thousand to the general fund CalPERS, I would like to reduce that thirteen thousand dollars and send it to the capital fund, so we're maintaining. The idea is, we put money in there so that when this stuff needs to be replaced, we have the money.
Yes.
It says we need to put in a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year in order to be ready to buy the stuff when it comes due.
I got you.
So, I would like to do that and make that switch.
I got it.
That's all.
Okay, so, that's just a discussion item, so?
Do you need action for this thing?
Yes, please.
Then I'll move that we approve the budget proposals with the one change of moving thirteen thousand out of the CalPERS contribution and into the capital reserve fund.
I'll second that.
We need a button pusher.
Oh, that's right. Team, make Christmas.
Push every button, Leo.
I love that.
Next.
Jake, did you punch yours?
I punched.
All right.
And that passed with a five oh. Moving on, TPR lease amendment? We're right, staff is recommending the city council consider approving the amendment to the two thousand fifteen lease, and I think we, isn't that what we?
Can we just make that motion? I'll move, I'll move that we approve it.
You gotta be the mover.
I'm trying to get you home before you turn into a pumpkin.
That passes again with a five oh, large item pickup program, staff report on the large item pickup. Mr. Ted, we get another new person. Short and sweet, you heard Leo, he's hungry.
I'll do my best. At the March twenty-eighth council meeting this year, excuse me, the city council approved the new large item pickup program, which replaced the spring cleanup program from previous years. The program began in April and ended in September of this year. During this timeframe, we provided sixteen collection dates with a total of four hundred and eighty-eight residents participating in the program. We collected over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand pounds of unwanted items, and that compares to three hundred and sixty thousand pounds of material collected in last year's spring cleanup program. The staff dedicated, the staff dedicated to the program amounted to approximately two hundred and eight hours, which compared to six hundred and fifty hours dedicated to the previous year's spring cleanup program. Overall, the program was very successful. Overall, over four hundred and forty-two hours of valuable staff time was saved with the implementation of the new program, and over sixty-five hundred dollars was saved in refuge collection fees, or disposal fees. The only issue encountered with the, with the program was the scheduling. Some residents were scheduled a month or more, or a month from when they called at the end of the, as they called, and at the end of the program, there were a large number of residents calling to schedule pickups and not enough slots were available. The program was adjusted to accommodate these residents by increasing the number of pickups in a day to twenty-five, from twenty-five to thirty-five, as well as adding additional pickup days in August and September. Next year, staff is planning to schedule up to four days a week per month, excuse me, four days per month with thirty-five site pickups per day to accommodate the demand. Also, an insert into, in the utility bill will be sent out to residents, along with Nixville Alert notifying the residents that the program, the start of the program, that the, reminding them of the program rules, and that the program is the first come, first served, so call and schedule their pickups early. So, we're real, real happy with the program. It saved a lot of time, it ran fairly smooth, and I think it would be, we ought to continue the program as listed.
You know, I heard, you know, a lot of scuffle, disgruntled people when we change that program. How do you feel that after it's all done and over with, the public, you know, how do you feel it went? I have, because I've never, I haven't heard any complaints in a while, but I remember when we first changed it, I did get people that were really perturbed, but yet, and we, it was pretty easy to explain why we did it. And, you know, financial wasn't one of the reasons, it was just because we were having people from everywhere coming into our town dumping their crap. And so, how do you think they received it?
I think, I think there's, during the process, there was a lot of negativity expressed to us when they were calling in scheduling regarding, they liked, several folks liked the program like it, like it was. As we explained the situation to them, most of them understood. We haven't had any more complaints. I think it's, everybody's now accepting that this is the new program, and so I think it, I think the majority of the public understands and is happy with it.
I got a variety of comments that went, everything from, hey, I still got my stuff picked up, I was able to call, but the majority of that I got was very positive. We don't have stuff laying around in the streets all the time until it's waiting to get picked up. That by far was more comments I got on a positive side. But here's what jumped out in your memo. We saved fifty-five man days, two point seven five months in time doing it this way.
Hours?
Four oh eight, four hundred and fifty-some hours divided by eight hours is fifty-five days, which is two point seven five months.
We've got to, do we get to take credit for that, the council?
I think it turned out, mathematically, it turned out fine.
I've got a question. I think I agree with Mike's sentiment, I've had all kinds of positive comments from people. My question is, for the people that weren't able to schedule, or maybe they, you know, forgot or called last minute and it was booked up, would it be beneficial to consider adding one day where people could come and dump their own load if they weren't able to get it picked up? get it picked up? I know, we talked through it before, and it's just a thought, I don't know.
My thought, as human nature is, you allow that one day, you'll have a twenty percent overrun, and then you'll still have people upset that they missed the day.
But, you know, we did it at the last minute, but we did it last minute, no, but you're right, we did it last minute last time, if you remember, we changed the program, I mean, now they, we've got a whole year to tell them about it, whatever the timing is.
This year will run a lot smoother.
Okay, let's move on to reports. Chief, bearded one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council, I just have one quick item. Saturday, we received assistance from some outside agencies, and I just wanted to thank them for their support in our activity. We received assistance from the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Office, CHP Stockton Office, and S Comm Police Department, so I just want to thank them for their help with our endeavor.
Ted?
One, one item, wanted to go over our water, water usage report. Last, last month, in October, we reduced, a reduction came out to thirteen point seven percent compared to two thousand and thirteen. Our annual running, annual average right now is twenty nine point two percent, no, excuse me, twenty seven point seven percent for the running average. The, as of November first, we've reduced the watering days down to one day a week as per regulations. We've updated the, the conservation signs at Jack Tone and East Main. We've also sent out Nixal Alerts, reminding people of the one day a week watering. As for enforcement, in October, we issued twenty violation notices and two penalty assessments, and to date for November, we're at fourteen violation notices. We've asked our, having our garbage truck and street sweeper to assist with the reporting of violators for, while they're, while they're working doing their routes. The groundwater, as we continue to closely monitor the groundwater, the groundwater, we've been observing, the groundwater's level continues to slowly, slowly go up, it's come up about a foot in about six months, so we're, we're happy with that, and we're gonna continue to monitor it.
Kai? I'm not even, I'm passing you, you've talked enough for today.
You've got something?
I do have something.
Oh, for crying out...
Really quick.
You gotta be out.
I'm sorry, I won't be here next month, so I'm trying to make up for that already. Hey, Dan, can you go put the slide up? Now, don't start calling me Chuck, okay? No, we did want to do a report, kind of on a yearly basis, when we did development agreement reviews, to kind of update you, council with residential growth, where we're at year to date, and it's something the school district was, I think, in, interested in as well, so we'll be forwarding this to them. But year to date, we've actually issued out twenty nine single-family residential permits through September, and thirty two multifamily, and that actually is, it represents about a one point one three growth rate for two thousand and seventeen, although we're not fully done with two thousand and seventeen. I don't think we're gonna see a rush on permits by the end of the year, so it won't change much from that. This is the chart from...
Were all those built out?
They're currently in the process of being finished up. Those are permits that are pulled, they have not yet been finalized.
Are those thirty two multifamily, the apartments?
Yes, yes, that's the apartments going on. So then this is a chart from going back to nineteen seventy six, this shows you the growth rate for the city of Ripon. We're about fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty two residents at the beginning of the year, they tally that up, they base that off of residential permits issued. This, I did want to kind of go through this a little bit. This is actually the breakdown of the, of the units we have in town. We have, actually have about fifty, four hundred and fifty units in town, and they break down, kind of as you see here on the chart. We did this bottom section here, we did try to kind of put lots in sizes of, of lot sizes, so the red on top's what we consider high density, that's apartment-type housing, the blue here, medium density, so the projects that you just reviewed here this evening, that's lot sizes that you're seeing in some of those. The green area in the middle, that's kind of our basic single-family residential lots, that's what most houses in town are. And then as you get up to kind of the lighter, or the darker blue there, the kind of purplish, those are the, what we consider larger lots, so, and then fifteen thousand plus are obviously kind of ranchette-type lots, or a little bit higher. And that breaks down to actual percentages, you can see here on the chart. If you look at our development percentage over the years, if you like the way the city's been developing, I do have the percentages of what's actually kind of the city breaks down into. So a little bit better picture of that would be this chart here. The existing lots are in the blue, and kind of are, if you kind of follow a development philosophy of, of Ripon, of how we separate those lots out, you can see we're not far off of keeping the same number, kind of quality of lots and same development philosophy that I think that's been successful in the city of Ripon. I guess you are a little bit shy on some of the very large lots, but that's, those are, those are hard to come by. So basically, we currently have three single-family residential projects actively building. You got the Vineyards, which is right across from Mississauga Sports Park, one hundred and thirty three lots there. Alexandra Place, they're just finishing up the Seven Division Streets down at the end of Vera and Doak, those are nineteen lots down there. And Silverstone, which is the one right by Repose School, twenty nine lots that are actively being built out there. We do have the multifamily projects, that's under construction at North Ripon and River Road, and then obviously the two that you reviewed this evening, Meadow Wood and Meadow Brook. So that's the breakdown of what's in the pipeline and what's coming, and what's been happening this year, I don't know if you got any questions.
Can you send that?
I can send that out to you.
James?
Nothing to report.
Wake up down there, chief. I take it you have nothing else to say? Kevin? We'll go all, wait, I guess we gotta go to Mr. Parks. Leo?
I have one. It's the number of people in this town that don't know what a stop sign is, in my mind is getting out of control. And I don't know what to do about it, but it's getting to the point of it's downright dangerous in some, there, I had one today, I was coming back from a meeting here, and somebody came out at the end of Vera, they didn't even stop. They looked and saw that I was coming, so they sped up, so that they could get through the intersection before I got there.
That's conscientious driver.
It's, well, I get nervous when they're around schools and in places where people walk.
Hey, stand out in front of my house for about an hour.
I think we need to deputize Leo, give him a ticket.
I'm just, and I'm not casting aspersions on anybody, but it, it's getting ridiculous.
Are they California stops, or are they just...
No, they're not Californ, they're...
They're yields.
When they go by my house, they're actually speeding, and I live on a stop sign.
They know where you live.
Yeah, pretty much, I guess.
I could live with California stops, because I make them once in a while myself. These are not, these are not California stops, they're full-blown, that stop sign doesn't mean a thing to me, I'm moving.
Full stop. Well behind the line, every time.
If I may, Councilman Zuber, I would agree with you, and our, our stats actually show that. So far through this morning, we have written over double of the traffic citations regarding the stop sign violations that we did last year already, and we still have six weeks left of the year. So last year, we wrote a hundred and thirty two, this year, we've written two hundred and eighty one, and...
I appreciate it, I mean, it's just an observation, somebody is gonna get killed.
We are, about a year ago, we developed a traffic plan that goes based on traffic collisions, citizen complaints, and our own observations, and so that has helped some of it, but unfortunately, with the sheer number of vehicles that are coming in and out of town in the early morning hours and in the evening hours, it has become overwhelming at points. We're doing our best to address some of those things, but yeah, our numbers show that, that it's almost an epidemic, and it's not just in our community, it's kind of all over the valley, but for two hundred and eighty one stop sign violations, that is the second-most citations we've written regarding stop signs over a ten-year period, is this year. The other time was in two thousand and eight, and we had a dedicated two-man traffic unit at the time, so that kind of shows you how obvious some of the violations are occurring within our community.
Can I ask you a question based on that? Because of all the traffic that's going on, we got a lot of people coming to town, are most of these residents, are these people from out of the air that are probably cutting through?
The stop sign violations, I did not check on that, so I'll have to go back and look, but we did an operation, a semi-operation, we were called an operation plan earlier last week, where we spent approximately two hours in the second street, second street, in main street areas from about Acacia to Stockton, and within those two hours, our patrol officers made over twelve traffic stops and issued eight citations for stop sign violations, and a large portion of those that were stopped were cutting through town from the Bay Area to south of here.
New Daddy Daniel.
So since the last, most of you probably know, maybe all of you already know, since the last time I saw you, my wife and I brought a new baby boy into the world, so welcoming him and trying to get some sleep, so that's new, and then as always, thank you to the members of the public here, there's not many of you left, but thank you for being here, and Leo, I didn't mean to make light of the stop sign situation, because I do agree that it's important, and...
Well, I'll, I'm still waiting for a picture.
I'll send everybody a picture, how about that?
Vice Mayor, Ristuccio.
Yeah, Dan, can you put up my PowerPoint, please?
No.
All right, meeting is adjourned.
I would have walked out if that had happened.
With that, we will close the city council meeting, and we will open up the Ripon Redevelopment Assembly Agency of Tuesday, November fourteenth. Roll call, Lisa.
Director Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Jake Parks.
Here.
Joe Zuber.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mike Ristuccia.
President.
Chairman Dean Uger.
Here. Public discussion?
So moved.
Save his last meeting?
Two of the minutes.
Approve of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Oops, I didn't log in, I...
Wait a minute, I gotta...
Come on, Tricia.
Whoa, it won't work.
My name's like, sign in.
You know what, if she's not careful, we won't let her join us on any of these future meetings.
Oh, God, that would really mess it up.
Wait, my name's not coming up on there?
Well, no.
Nope.
It won't light up.
Mine's frozen.
Here we go, okay.
How could you be in when I'm not?
Can I in? I'm in now. So put it up for vote.
What do we have to do?
How could you be here?
You gotta log back in.
I never logged out.
Hit close, that's why.
We got, hit close up at the second from the left on the top, close out, no, second from the left, not the fourth.
One, two, four, five.
Okay.
Yeah, that's this one.
Now go there, one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, is that all it is?
One, two, three, four, five.
Yep.
And then into.
Fast forward to here.
There you go, okay.
That's not...
Okay, so I moved, where's the deal? I moved, okay, who got second?
You get second.
No, I voted, I moved.
Okay, that...
You did.
Passes five oh, consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Beat ya.
Passes the five oh, and that's it, good night.
That's all? God, I was just...